Do we listen to people? Are they just on my screen? Um. Good evening, everyone. There's everyone. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 8th, 2021 special meeting of the Santa Monica Planning Commission. It's now 5:34 PM. Can, so I'm calling as to order. And can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Landris?
Here.
Commissioner Raskin?
Here.
Commissioner Reese?
Here.
And Chair Pastor?
Here. Let's move on to the Planning Director's Report. David.
Good evening, Commission. Saw the slide pop. There it is. Okay. So upcoming for the Planning Commission. We had scheduled September 20th to initiate a discussion on the final housing element and associated red lines. September 24th for a final housing element recommendation. I know there's some discussion about scheduling on the 24th, so we could save that till I run through these other items. October 6th is canceled. Then on October 20th, we have 925 Wilshire Boulevard, which is a CUP for medical cannabis. 500 Broadway, which is the new mixed-use project at Fifth and Broadway, the CUP for a bank. And then a discussion with the Finding Commission of zoning text amendments for tattoo parlors to make them permitted uses in places in town where they're currently allowed by a minor use permit. And then finally, a vesting tentative track map for 1315 Third Street Promenade. City Council actions, August 24th, there were no PC-related items to report out on. And then upcoming meeting, September 14th, also no PC-related items. And then final item, as always, housing element updates. I think you're more than familiar with all these items, but versus the draft DIR comment period is closed. And then we have scheduled Planning Commission discussions on September 20th and 24th. And then City Council scheduled items for October 12th. And then 13th if needed. Obviously, the element needs to be approved by October 15th. So this is right. The council hearings are right before the deadline on the 15th. That concludes my report. And if you want to, I'm happy to answer other questions. But again, I know you wanted to talk about the September 24th schedule, so we could do that.
Yeah, David, can you give the public some context about why we're moving the meeting from, we thought we were going to be meeting on the September 20th and 21st, and now we're proposing to do it on the 20th and the 24th?
Yeah, it's really a noticing issue. So the noticing requirement was that it be published in the daily press for three consecutive days. It was only published for one day. So we need to do the three consecutive day publishing. And then, once we do that, in order to meet the number of days in advance that has to be published, that pushes us to the 24th. So that's the reason we need to move it.
Okay. So Commissioners, I'd like to talk a little bit about your availability on the 24th. So I think there's really two questions to talk about. One, and one is, are you available on the 24th? And if so, do we want to do it at 5:30 or do we want to do it in an earlier time? Or do we want to do it on a different and later date? And let me ask the question to Heidi about what happens if we didn't get the housing element to the state by October 15th? Just so we all understand what's at stake.
Right. So the statute requires that we adopt it within the timeframes that, or we have to start adopting every four years for at least two cycles. There is a grace period built into there, but we are not necessarily looking to go into that grace period and trying to meet the actual October 15th deadline.
I understand. What is the grace period?
120 days.
Okay, so given that information, that it is 120 days, and given what is on our plate tonight and the most recent letter that we got from HCD, which I think we should also take into consideration. Can I hear some thoughts about timing? Once to start. Commissioner Landris and then Commissioner Lambert.
Okay, so I understand that this is, I understand that this is vitally important. So I want to frame what I'm about to say with that. I think we need to have a housing element that is built. You know, one of the things that the HCD letter did give us some credit for was our consultation and outreach. In fact, we were told that we undersold the work that we did. And I do have some concerns about the Planning Commission doing, taking such an important vote on a night when no city body traditionally ever meets. I just, I don't think that's, I don't think that's good process. The other issue, and so I wonder about the timing is if we adopt on the 15th and HCD comes back and says, you know, nice try. You've taken a second, a second crack at this. It's still not good enough. I don't know what their turnaround time is. So in other words, if we know that we have to have a certified housing element by about the third week in January, if I'm, if my numbers are correct, let's say January 15th for the sake of argument. I guess my question is, what happens if we slip? I don't know whether council can slip two weeks. Because if we miss wealth for council, then that puts them back by a week or two. I will come to the meeting on the 24th. I just don't think that it's, I just don't think it's a great night for us to do this work. And I would prefer for us at least to do it earlier in the day. But I recognize that other, you know, my schedule may not be the same as other people's schedules. So. That's right.
Let's clarify, Heidi, what you said. I thought you said that it's, that we have to adopt by October 15th. And there is a 120-day grace period for us to adopt. Is that correct?
Right. So I'm pulling up the statutory language at the moment. And then also, as you'll notice, that's what HCD's letter, you know, indicated. But what happens is the cycles are set and they are aligned with the, with the council of governments, right? So SCAG has a specific deadline of October 15th. The statute provides that if you do not adopt within the schedule, then you have to go on the four-year schedule. I'm pulling up the exact language from the statute about the 120 days and whether or not it actually includes the certification requirement or not. So that's the, that's the piece I'm confirming at the moment. Because as you know, once it's adopted, it has to go up to HCD for further review and potential certification. And if they don't certify, it gets kicked back to us. So I'm checking.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
I, I am available on, excuse me, September 24th, whatever time today it turns out to be. I don't really think that we have an option if we're going to meet our schedule. I don't think that discussing, taking public input and acting on September 20th, all the same meeting is realistic at all. And, and so I don't think that's an option. It's interesting about the 120 days. I didn't know that because, I mean, given, given the incredible extent of HCD's comments, I think it's going to be a Herculean task to get this housing element done by the week of September 20th. I mean, it's hard to imagine. But assuming it does. So there's no penalty that I'm hearing if there's 120-day, okay, so Heidi's looking at that, 120-day flex time that we have, so we can have a couple of extra weeks to do it. And I guess that's the question. I have no problem with September, with September 24th. I don't think we really have an option at this point.
Chair Reese and then Commissioner Raskin.
That night is already busy for me, so I would have to juggle things. But if that's where we end up, I would do that. But I, I will echo what Commissioner Landris said, which is it's a terrible night to have a public meeting. And I think that, as also pointed out by Commissioner Landris, is that they've already kind of given us props for our outreach. And we would undercut that if we went and had a here, a meeting on a night that is atypical. And I think that we should look to the early part of the next week and, and just do the best we can at that point.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, I, I'd hope that, you know, during the items agendized for discussion about the housing element, we could have discussed a little bit the merits of, you know, if it's legally feasible to push this back into the grace period if possible. You know, from the conversations I've had with members of the public, everybody feels like they don't have time to wrap their heads around everything that we're doing. So, you know, count me in favor of using the grace period if, if possible. And, and that being said, I wonder too, and I know that this contingent on staffing available, if anyone would be amenable to having a daytime meeting during the weekend? Because if I understand it correctly, we just have to get the notice. Well, actually, that begs the question of if we have to get the notice to Daily Press by Saturday or if it's by Monday. But if it's by Monday, then maybe we could do a weekend daytime meeting.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi, do you have anything you want to add?
I am available on the 24th, but I'm also aware that the workload, judging from the HCD letter, the workload is huge here. And I don't, I don't honestly see how it can be done and how it can be done well. Because right now, we are actually cobbling, for better or for worse, a public document. And we can't just invent stuff and slap it down and hope that it holds together. But it's actually a legal document, so it's going to have to have some pretty substantive support. And I'm not sure that we're going to be able to generate that in the short amount of time that we have.
So I do want to remind the Commission that you will have an opportunity to discuss that aspect of all of that during your discussion items tonight. So I don't want to foreclose on the, on the concern that Commissioner Raskin raised, which I agree with. It's, we're not, you're not ending your, you're just, you're not foreclosing our discussion on, on all of those items. And now this is, this is a scheduling question at this moment. You don't have to finish it at this moment if you do not want to. Because you certainly have an opportunity to hear staff's thoughts on the HCD letter to provide your input and, and have further discussion at that moment as well.
Yeah, before you weigh in, Commissioner Raskin, yeah. I, I think we should put off this discussion until the end of the agenda when we, after we've talked about the HCD letter. I am available on the 24th. I'll make myself available in the evening or the day. I agree with Commissioner Landris. I don't think it's a good time for the public. Commissioner Raskin, I think a weekend is a good idea potentially. I can't do it that weekend, but we'll make myself available on a different weekend. And I wish I had known there was a grace period, frankly, because I'm not saying that we should wait to the last minute. But, you know, we have been pushing, 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 pushing. And look, no one's been pushing harder than staff, right? Nobody's working harder than staff. But I think if I had known there was a grace period, I would have, I would have liked to have known. And I imagine the council, you know, would have liked to. So I suggest that we table this discussion until the end of the meeting. And Commissioner Landris, do you want to have the last word unless someone else has something to add?
I, well, I actually would like to ask for clarity before a decision is made, which is to say, I had understood that, I had understood from earlier presentations on the housing element that the purpose of the grace, that a purpose of the grace period was to allow cities in California, jurisdictions in California, to get essentially one more bite at the getting the housing element correct. So to the extent that the grace period is available to everybody and us passing it earlier means that we, the state could come back and say, this isn't good enough. And we could go at it one more time at the end of December or the beginning of January. That's super helpful to know. If the answer is no, we only have one more, one shot at adoption. And if it's not accepted by HCD, then we will be decertified and we will be back to the form, the, the four-year schedule. Then I'd rather take more of the grace period to get it right the first time. But we need to know very clearly the basis on which we are proceeding. Are we proceeding that we have one more shot? Or are we proceeding that we potentially have two more shots? Because that's going to definitely inform, I think, what we want to do. That's, that's all I want to say.
Heidi, can you clarify whether the 120-day grace period is for certification? Our adoption by the city or certification by the state?
All right. So that's, that's the part that we are still looking at at this moment. I apologize. We're still, because there's actually a couple of moving pieces with this. And the statute has been updated recently. And there's also separate guidance on the HCD website. So we're trying to piece all that together. And then the planning manager can also explain this. Well, as you know, we've explained this to council before, that the, the idea is, is that because the language isn't as clear as it could be, we wanted to try to avoid getting into a discussion about whether or not the grace period was going to put us back or jeopardize our certification process at all. So, so that's kind of.
Okay, so we're going to table this. We're going to move on. And then that will, Nina, and that will give you some time to look at that. Nina, last.
I just wanted to say that I think that by now, if the public hasn't figured out that this is kind of an emergency, all, all engines pushing forward push and that we might have to do things on weird days. That would be pretty surprising. And I think that the real driving force about which day we do this meeting has to do with the legal requirements of noticing and what staff thinks they need to get this job done. And I think all of these other things are academic and confusing, red, not confusing, but distractions. And let's just focus on getting it done in a way. I mean, if staff says they would really, I don't want them to work on weekends, but I'm sure they do. And I'm not going to pretend I don't think they do. And they might need that one more weekend in order to get it done. And so why would we push it until the next week at all and deprive of them of that time? So I would leave it to staff. And I hope while we have the rest of this discussion, that they think about that. So we can ask them when the time comes at the end.
Thank you, Commissioner Fresco. Let's move on to Planning Commissioner announcements. Does anybody have any announcements? Okay, seeing none, moving on. I am going to announce the public comment procedures. Please note tonight's procedures for public comments. We are accepting oral public comment by phone through the pre-registration system noted on the agenda. Registration for oral comment closed at 3:30 PM today. If you are a member of the public who registered for public comment, please check your email for call-in instructions. Instructions were emailed at the start of the meeting. Written comments received up until noon today have been read by the Commission. Comments received afternoon today will be considered part of the record of the proceedings, but will not be posted online with the Planning Commission's agenda. Might not be reviewed by the Planning Commission and will not be read aloud during public comment during the meeting. Please be aware with regards to the moderator chat. So there is a chat function in BlueJeans. Please do not use it. The moderator chat function in BlueJeans is for technical help from administrative staff only. So please, I should say, only use it if you have a technical question. It is not for public comment. The Commission cannot see the chat and comments will not be forwarded to the Commission or entered into the record. So again, only use the chat if you have a technical question. Let's see, we had no Commissioner announcements. Moving on to approval of the minutes, there are none. So we're going to keep moving on the agenda. There are no statements of official action, so we're going to miss through that item. So that brings us to the public hearing portion of the, of the agenda. And item 8A, which is a resolution of intention for adoption of Resolution Number 21-009, declaring the Planning Commission's intention to consider recommending to the City Council that the City Council amend the official districting map for consistency with the goals, policies and programs set forth in the six-cycle housing element. So we do have a caller. We have a public commenter. So we're going to need to pull this item from the, well, it's on the public hearing agenda. It's not a consent agenda. Do I have a motion to waive the staff report?
Moved.
Okay, so moved by Landris, seconded by Lambert. Why don't we take the public comment and then if there's any discussion, we can do that.
Sorry, I need to make sure the Commission votes on waiving the staff report. That was a motion by Landris and Lambert.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi, this is to waive the staff report.
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yes. Thank you, Jane. Okay, so now let's take the public comment.
Okay, our caller for this item is Mark Verville. Hello, Mark. You are now off mute and live in the meeting. You have three minutes for comment.
Good evening. Mark Verville, resident, Santa Monica. I would like to take issue with the assumptions underlying the proposed Resolution Number 21-009 that recommends a City Council amendment of the city's official districting map and the amendment of the off-street parking overlay. Number one, housing construction in California has kept pace with population increases. The average number of persons per dwelling unit in 1960 was 2.9 for the state overall. And the corresponding number in 2020 is 2.7. According to the 2020 census, Santa Monica has 4,951 vacant units at the end of 2020 with a multifamily vacancy rate of between 9.5 and 12%. Los Angeles City had a multifamily vacancy rate between 5.8 and 10.2%. And LA County had a multifamily vacancy rate of between 4.8 and 10.6%. The only crisis is one of affordability, which is unrelated to unit construction. Santa Monica's homeless count has not materially changed over the past 10 years. And no data has been collected or analyzed on the prior or current transientsy component. As such, it is not known what Santa Monica should actually be planning for. In the last published report in 2017, the city noted that up to 80% of the homeless had been in the city for a year or less and that only 3% to 5% were native Santa Monicans. First-time homelessness prevention should be addressed with programs for rent-and-burden households in the city. None of the initiatives discussed in the housing element address that core requirement. There has been no data presented that suggests that the majority of new housing construction related to Santa Monica is either at urban rural interface versus urban suburban or is concentrated in fire hazard zones. The nonpartisan Freddie Mac analysis directly contradicts the 3.5 million California assumption for housing shortage and indicates that the real number is 820,000, which is entirely achievable over the next years, eight years at current build rates. There is no basis in fact for the 88-95 unit six-cycle RENA allocation. DAG expressly quantified the organic Santa Monica requirement at 1,156 units. Moreover, the state was originally required to, or requiring Santa Monica to produce 4,829 units. The jump to 88-95 was due to abundant housing LA's lobbying of the state. HCD comments re-city-owned land as to existing uses in any known conditions that preclude development in the planning period and the potential schedule for development be identified. No such analysis has been performed as, for example, Parking Structure III. No in-depth, methodologically rigorous analysis has been conducted on the tenant viability and community impact of parking requirement reduction or elimination. No in-depth, methodologically rigorous analysis has been conducted on the financial impact of the city revenues of the elimination of commercial spaces and core commercial infrastructure, such as parking garages, on the city's revenue budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. With that, is there any discussion? If not, oh, let's see, Commissioner Raskin, then Commissioner Landris, then Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate for the record my objections to the overlay. You've all heard them before. I'm nevertheless going to vote yes on this because it reflects the collective decision of the Planning Commission. But again, you all know my concerns.
Andrew.
Yes, I just want to clarify for the record that this, as a resolution of intention, is affecting the entire city. I am, want to acknowledge for the record that I live literally one parcel away from one of the A-Lots that's listed on the, on the map. So definitely under 500 feet. But insofar as this is something for the entire city, I believe that I am allowed to vote on it. But if I'm not, Heidi will correct me right now.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes, I'm very uncomfortable with the elimination of parking minimums. I know the intent of that, but I think it's mistaken. I don't think we should go down that road. Looking ahead, we know that cars are going to get smaller. They're going to get less polluting. They're going to get more efficient. But they're not going to disappear. And the car, until there is sufficient alternate forms of transportation of equal convenience and cost, the car is still going to be part of our lives. And so to tell people of middle income that are trying to get into these units that they can't have cars by right or that they're basically, what we're really saying is their extra cars or their only cars are going to be splattered in the neighborhood and not have the protection of a garage. And overloading the neighborhood is not a productive way to go and not desirable. So I can vote for this resolution.
Commissioner Lambert?
Let me just say, and we've said this before, this is not telling a developer they can't build any parking. And the chances are that a developer, in order to get financing to build a project, is going to have to include some parking. Otherwise, financing is probably not real. So I'm totally supportive of this and I believe the market will take care of the issue.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, Maury, I also have concerns about this. But, you know, this is just allowing work to move forward that reflects the votes by the Commission as a whole. So, you know, I So, you know, I disagree with it, but I, you know, I'm going to vote yes because that is full of all of us, and you know, that's where we're going.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi, then Commissioner Fresco.
Well, if people feel that parking is not an issue, that's fine. But if they do, and that could simply be stricken from this motion, just remove the words saying eliminate parking minimums. Again, I'm down in favor of saying that you can leave this up to the general policies of the private developer. I don't think that's the way to go. I think that that's really a destructive way to go, because what it'll happen is what's already happening is developers will build the garage as if they're going to put cars there, and then they won't put cars there. They'll rent it out to the neighborhood. They'll do other things with it. So I don't think it's a productive way to eliminate parking as a good thing for our city, particularly in the central core of our city.
I make a point of order?
I just want to remind you all that we're just voting on a resolution of intention, and we're not supposed to be discussing the substance of this matter. And by voting for this, we can discuss it next time. So I would move the question and
I had a point of order before moving the question. I think that comes first. I'm sorry, but I'm sorry, but Commissioner Fonda Bernardi, respectfully, your, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi has suggested that something is in this resolution that is in fact not in the resolution. And so I think it's important that we know what we're voting on. We're talking about commercial parking replacement restrictions. The resolution does not name minimums. The restrictions are related to a conversation that this commission had about, about how to link parcels, about whether parking could be provided by a commercial property to a residential property or vice versa. So to suggest that this conversation is even about that, I think is not entirely accurate. And so I'll yield back to Commissioner Fresco because I think we should, I think the public should know what we're voting on, and that's in fact what we're voting on. So.
I think we're getting, again, dangerously close to substance. So does anybody have anything new to say on the vote of the resolution of intent, not the substance of what will be in the new regulation to be considered by the commission?
Let's vote.
Let's vote.
So Commissioner Fresco is making the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
So moved by Commissioner Fresco, seconded by Commissioner Lambert. Jing, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
If this is really just a resolution of intent to discuss it, I will say yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landrus?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yeah. Okay, thank you, everyone. So we're going to move on to item nine in the agenda, which is discussion. And the first item on our agenda is discussion and possible direction to staff regarding a response to the letter dated August 30th, 2021, from California Department of Housing and Community Development, providing comments on our draft housing element for the six cycle. I would, here's what I want to propose. Just a minute, Commissioner Raskin. I want to propose that we do a staff presentation that, I was going to say that we should do public comment, but public comment, there is no callers for public comment. But in case anybody signs up for public comment, can they sign up for public comment now, Melissa? Or no? No, okay. So I was gonna, so let's do staff presentation, and then we'll take questions. Then we'll have discussion. Commissioner Raskin?
I just wanted to ask if it makes sense to consolidate items 9A and 9B, since I imagine there's going to be a little bit of overlap between the two. But I see shaking heads. Never mind.
I don't think so. I think let's take item, I agree there is a little bit of overlap, but it's my understanding that what staff is going to do now is go through the letter kind of point by point and give us their thoughts about how to respond to HCD. And I'm like, a little bit thinking about, because we have no public comment, do we want to have discussion after each point? I'm a little worried that's going to take us into like hours and hours and hours. So I'd like to start with just going through the whole thing. And if there is a problem, we can talk about it. Commissioner Landrus?
All right, in the interest of efficiency, I believe that there are whole sections of the letter that don't actually require a great deal of discussion. There are sections where HCD is asking staff to bulk up its narrative in certain areas. For the sake of efficiency, could, could we perhaps get those out of the way sooner rather than later so that we could then focus on the areas of the letter that require actual discussion?
No, I just think that if, like, staff will, I'm asking staff to just breeze through those items.
Okay.
And you, then nobody needs to comment on them. So really, you should only be commenting on the things that you comment on. And then as we go through this, I will try to consolidate issues for discussion so that after staff does the presentation, I will.
So you do want us to flag as they go by point by point so that we can?
I want you to flag in your own notes what you want to discuss at the end. And what I'm saying is I will attempt to consolidate issues for discussion. And with that, Jing, can you lead us through your staff report?
Sure. And Ross, can you, there we go.
Good evening, Commissioners. So I'm going to start with an overview of the HCD letter, and then Ross and Rachel are going to go through section A, which is largely a lot of technical detail, kind of what Commissioner Landrus was referring to, but we think it's important for the commission and the public to hear it and understand what the comments are and how we're planning to address them, just so that there's clarity across the board. So as you can see, what was attached to your agenda, we received HCD's comment letter on the draft housing element on August 30th. That was last Monday. And the letter is divided into five sections. Section A is that sort of technical detailed section about housing needs, resources, and constraints. A lot of the comments there having to do with, you know, bolster this, or, and looking through, a lot of it was form or standard comments. Maybe it was information that was missed, you know, or wasn't able to be found by the reviewer. And so we think that those can be very easily addressed. Section B is about housing programs and what we're seeing here and in other housing elements across the state that have been certified or in the comment letters is that this is really the first cycle where HCD is taking more of an enforcement role, and they will be taking, you know, that, that approach with cities and be responsible for enforcing housing element compliance. So what we are actually seeing is that they're looking for significantly more specificity than you may be used to seeing in prior housing elements. So more detail, you know, in terms of guarantees and commitments as opposed to explore or investigate different options, so that that sort of language is not favored. And then the last three sections on quantified objectives, public participation, and consistency with the general plan are sort of areas, you know, where we feel we can address these. So I think overall, you know, we, although it looks like a long letter, you know, it really is reflective of the scale of the content that was delivered to HCD. Some of you may have seen shorter comment letters to other cities, but that may have possibly been, you know, what we've seen is maybe they just missed entire sections. And so comment was shorter because there was less substance to respond to. I will say in reviewing this that staff is very confident that we are able to address each and every point in the letter. The comments don't, don't concern us, you know, in terms of not being possible to address that, or, you know, needing to wholesale, you know, revise things, you know, we think that it's entirely possible to address all of their issues. The one outstanding policy issue that needs further, you know, direction, and if not surprising, is with respect to whether the housing element sufficiently meets a firmly furthering fair housing requirements. Again, not surprising, this is a brand-new requirement for this housing element cycle. And it's really, you know, the comments we see, same, you know, the same language being used, and, you know, does the element open access to higher opportunity areas? Does it overcome historic patterns of segregation? Does it foster inclusive communities? And of course, we have had very, very robust discussions at the Planning Commission and the city council with regard to AFFH, and particularly the programs, you know, HCD's comment letter was very much focused on the lack of commitment in, in the AFFH program. So that is, you know, certainly one area where we, we see additional policy direction needed. So with that overview, I'm going to turn it over to Ross and Rachel to take us through the letter.
Thanks, Jing. I'm going to try to go through this quickly, knowing that we have time limitations and we have a lot on our plate tonight. So the first section addresses housing needs, resources, and basically, HCD said that we didn't provide enough data with regards to affirmatively furthering fair housing. For example, they said that we didn't provide enough discussion on fair housing enforcement and outreach capacity, which is something that, you know, our city's attorney's office has been doing and does it very well. So I think that in that case, it was just they didn't know where to look. It was, that discussion was already provided in the housing element, and we just need to reference that in chapter two, which is the assessment of fair housing. Same goes with integration and segregation. They want a data about familial status and disabilities. This was provided in the appendix, and this information will also be added to the chapter two fair housing assessment. Same with the last area, which is the areas of concentrated poverty and affluence. They said that there was no, there was no discussion of areas of affluence. And just so you all know, there are no areas of concentrated affluence in the city, but we will add a map to address HCD's concern, and so that will be added to chapter two as well. Next slide. The next thing they had requested was basically trends and data on homelessness, overpayment, overcrowding, and substandard housing conditions. All of this was provided in appendix B, as seen here. And again, this will be added to chapter two. They also wanted us to provide local data and knowledge on trends and issues related to fair housing. And while we pointed out in the housing element that we previously have done a 2020 assessment of fair housing, I don't think that they had clicked on the link and read through that report, so we will attach that report as an appendix to the housing element. Next slide. And the next comment they had was with regard to the sites inventory. They wanted us to address the suitable sites inventory relative to how the SSI impacts segregation and integration patterns in various income groups. So we will add new maps overlaying the SSI over socioeconomic data. We'll add that to chapter two. And then, of course, the last kind of overall comment they had, bring it all together, was that they felt that the programs that was provided do not appear to facilitate any meaningful change for fair housing. And we will address this later, but we also suggest providing an additional bolstering language that, you know, talks about how our currently proposed programs address AFFH, particularly what our new language talked about the moderate housing income overlay, how we're allowing an increase of ADUs in R1 zones, as well as the city's approach to the preservation of existing residential, as well as the city's currently, recently new program that addresses households that were historically displaced by the freeway. And then we'll come back to this program later, on how we can really bolster our programs with AFFH. Next slide. The second thing that they had requested was to include data relative to extremely low-income households. And again, this was provided in appendix B. We'll move it forward over to chapter two. In addition, they wanted some more local data on substandard housing conditions. They felt that the ACS data we used was not sufficient. They were particularly looking for whether or not we had code enforcement data, and so we'll consult with code enforcement to pull that data into chapter two. Next slide. The next thing that they commented on was the SSI itself, and whether or not the, whether or not we provide enough data and programs to support the SSI. Particularly, they said they wanted more information with regards to what was pending and approved, or what is pending or approved, and how the affordability levels of those units will be ensured. We'll add that data to the, to the list of pending and approved projects in the appendix. And I think they want a clarification that, you know, the units will be indeed restricted, and we'll add language to that effect. Additionally, they wanted to, to do, to add data on how we are using the maximum floor area ratios and calculating capacity. They wanted us to provide more substantial evidence to show that our, our sites are actually being developed to the maximum FAR, so we'll pull all of that data in. Next slide. Another thing that they commented on was demonstrating the suitability of the non-vacant sites, you know, and so we told them, of course, that Santa Monica is pretty much all developed, and all of our sites are pretty much all non-vacant. So they just wanted more substantial evidence showing that the sites will actually redevelop for housing. So what we'll do is we'll provide a list of all commercial versus residential projects in the past few years. We'll bolster the discussion of the sites, how the sites were selected, and supplement it with information such as AVR and other factors that led to the sites being included in SSI. In addition, the HCD also commented on the city-owned sites. They want additional information such as what the existing land use designation are, designations are, allowable densities, and a potential schedule for development. And so we'll include all of the background information on the sites. But we will be discussing later on how programs to be, will be refined to address HCD's concern about having a potential schedule. And then lastly, the, they had commented to show that we needed to provide data showing that the zoning is actually 30 units per acre. And I think here again, the reviewer probably misread the column that was provided in, for the SSI, and they probably read the number of units as units per acre rather than the number of actual units. So we'll add clarifying language just to make sure that that was interpreted correctly. Next slide. Another thing that was a particular concern for HCD was the number of units, ADU units that we projected towards the RENA. They said we could only count permitted ADUs and not the in-progress ones, so we'll adjust that accordingly. Another thing with regard to the SSI was they said that some of our, anything less than half an acre is considered a small site. And so they wanted us to provide more evidence that the small sites are adequate for development of low-income units. And so that's simply providing more additional information of past housing projects that have been developed. So we can provide more information on that. And then also, they talked about infrastructure and clarifying that there is enough existing and planned water sewer capacity to accommodate the RENA. And while we did include a brief discussion of it, we'll pull some additional analysis in, analysis that was provided in the EIR to talk about infrastructure capacity. Next slide. And then water sewer priority, Government Code 65589.7 requires that water and sewer priority be given to projects that include low-income units. So we will need to add a new program to comply with the state law. And then lastly, HCD just provided a reminder that we needed to submit our sites electronically, and there's no response necessary for this. Next slide. And I'm going to turn it over to Ross. I apologize if I ran through that all pretty quickly, but I feel like those were all pretty self-explanatory. Thanks.
Thanks, Rachel. So similar to Rachel's comments regarding adding more data and analysis, when it comes to constraints, largely a lot of the comments from HCD are aligned with just adding more data, or maybe them not realizing, you know, where to find the data that we already provided. So to kind of jump into constraints, the first comment was about sites for zoning for a variety of housing types. Specifically, the four types that you see on this screen, emergency shelters, supportive housing, employee housing, accessory dwelling units, were called out. Emergency shelter is why we did talk in appendix E about where they are allowed. HCD has asked for us to kind of provide a little HCD has asked for us to kind of provide a little bit of analysis on, you know, using the sites in your SSI where emergency shelters can be permitted by right. What is your bed capacity? And it specifically requires us to meet our most recent homeless count number of 907. So we will be just bolstering that section a little bit to add a little proof that we have enough sites that allow emergency, emergency shelters on our SSI. Regarding supportive housing, HCD commented that supportive housing has to be a use by right in multi-unit and mixed use zones. This information was provided both in figure E10 and on page E31, that where it says that all of our supportive housing land use types are permitted, however and wherever, multi-unit and single unit residential is permitted. So largely, it's just maybe reinforcing where this information is located. Employee housing, we need to show consistency with the Employee Housing Act, specifically showing that employee housing for six or fewer employees are treated like they are single unit dwellings. Santa Monica doesn't regulate the occupancy of single unit dwellings, and there are no specific provisions in the code to restrict employee housing. So therefore, the city already complies with this requirement. So staff will just be adding in a clarifying language to appendix E stating this compliance is already being, being met through our code currently. And as far as ADUs, we got a comment saying that our newly adopted ordinance was not in compliance with state law. The HCD said that in their comment letter, they were providing a supplemental letter telling us what is not in compliance. So in the meantime, we will just be revising program 1G, which is already about ADUs, to bring the ordinance into compliance, and the future revisions will be based off of what HCD's specific comments are. The next section is really about government constraints in regards to housing income levels and the production of housing. So land use controls were brought up, and they wanted us to analyze not just independently what some of the land use controls do, but what they cumulatively, cumulatively can affect housing. So we did summarize the various land use controls. We have many in this city, but I think we did a good overview of that in appendix E. But we will be adding additional language regarding kind of how the city currently incentivizes housing. So for example, the DCP is very much a housing policy plan. So maybe that just wasn't highlighted enough. So that is kind of what we'll kind of bolster a couple of sections in. Fees and extractions, HCD seemed to think that our, how, a lot of our housing needs conditional use permits. Even though there's a whole table saying that they don't, we will make that a little bit more clear. And they were also a little concerned about some of the cost of development fees in our housing. But when we looked at this, this largely had to do with the three unit condos that choose to do an in lieu affordable housing fee instead of providing an affordable unit. This is a choice that developers make on their own. It does not apply to all housing projects. So although it is a factor, it is kind of a self inflicted factor. So we will be sure to point that out, that that is not a common impact fee, and it is also kind of a self collected fee. Regarding local processing and permit procedures, they wanted to us to analyze the discretionary entitlement impacts on housing. As you guys are aware, we currently have a housing threshold ISO, and per program 1A is all about making pretty much all housing projects a ministerial process, so just an AA. So yes, that is an entitlement, but it's basically if you meet code, you get approved. So we will add additional language regarding, however, we will add additional language regarding the ARB process, highlight the streamlining or revisions, and really point out that the designer view standards can't deny a project or reduce density. However, we will add additional program regarding the future establishment of objective design standards, which kind of is, it leads me into SB 35 streamlining, streamlined ministerial process of the next bullet point. Currently, while the city is not subject to SB 35, it most likely will be in the future. So that new program we will add will just be plans to bring the city into compliance with SB 35, such as establishing the objective design standards. So that will be a new program and a future work effort that we will undertake through the housing element. Code enforcement, they just want to know a little bit more about our local building code amendments. We did include a section in appendix E regarding how we implement the building code. We're just going to add a little bit more local information about some of our local amendments. Largely, these are around energy and water. For on and off site improvements, they wanted us to identify and analysis standards for impacts on costs by housing. So that we did have a section about this, but we will add a little bit more additional language regarding what standards sometimes, what requirements might be, and kind of the overall process of how a project is determined if they need to provide improvement. And I believe finally, on this particular section, it's constraints on housing for persons with disabilities. There was a whole section about reasonable accommodation, but they just kind of wanted us to explain, you know, what are the findings, even though those provided, but you know, how do people get approved? We will just kind of include some past performances where there are reasonable accommodation, and really highlight that we don't deny reasonable accommodations. So just a little additional clarifying information will be provided. Group homes for seven or more persons. They want us to analyze the constraints requirement of CUP. Staff's going to be working with CAO, City Attorney's Office, to ensure we are consistent with state law. But just in case we aren't, we're going to add in another program just to bring all of our regulations for special needs housing up to current state law in case we aren't, which kind of also leads into the next bullet point about the definition of housing. Specifically, they wanted us to analyze how single mortgage, lease, and rental agreement for all members, which is part of the definition of household, may impact disabled individuals. Staff will work with CAO to ensure consistent with state requirements, and a program will be added in to make sure all of those special needs and residential uses are consistent with state law. The next is they wanted us to analyze the time between housing entitlement improvement and building permits. So that would be like the time between an AA or in the past, a DRP would be, how long does it take for someone to actually submit to a building permit? So that's not receiving a building permit. So we kind of already highlighted the processing times and thresholds for housing projects. And like I mentioned earlier, due to the housing ISO threshold and program 1A, you know, all, most of all of our housing projects are ministerial. So we'll just add a little language in clearly stating the average time between this ministerial process and building permits to middle. On average, it seems about six to eight months is kind of that time in between that developers actually submit for the building permit. You know, that is them, you know, getting their structural plans together, maybe fine tuning some architectural designs. So that's really not, we're not holding them up, but we will, we will provide just our average lead time that we have seen typically. I believe that these are the, this is my last slide. They want us to analyze farm workers, permanent and seasonal farm worker housing. We did already mention that, you know, farm, we don't have farm worker housing needs in the city. However, they wanted us to provide information and acknowledgement of the county's need for farmhouse workers. So we'll pull in a little county data and further highlight various housing options that Santa Monica already provides that farm workers may take advantage of. The last one is due to, they wanted us to expand the eligible entities that have the capacity to manage at risk projects. So these are kind of nonprofit housing providers. I believe we only really mentioned CCSM. So we'll just kind of include other housing providers that have either worked in the city or that are in the area, maybe taking advantage of our Affordable Housing Roundtable group to kind of list other options or other entities that are out there that could help with this issue. And that is finishes section A, so I think it really highlights that.
No, I'm sorry, Ross, finish your thought.
I think it largely should highlight that, you know, a lot of this is just some additional data that needs to be added, maybe a program or two, but staff does feel it's not a huge amount of substantive information. So that concludes section A, but I don't know if you had a question before we go into the.
Yeah, I actually, I'm going to change my mind, and I do want to have discussion after each of these sections because I think that they're hefty, and I think it would be more productive if we could do the discussion right after we hear it. Obviously, please keep your comments brief and to the point, and don't repeat something that someone else has said. So I have a number of comments on this section, so I'm happy to start, or if someone else wants to start, they can do that. Okay, I'm going to start.
Would you like me to stop sharing screen, or do you want me to kind of toggle in between topics?
It would be great, Ross, if you could toggle between.
I will do my best to get to that.
Yeah, and I know it's hard. So my first question is about, what is a concentrated area of influence?
It's, so it's the concentrated areas of affluence. It's areas where there's, yes. And I apologize, I don't have the exact definition, but it's basically, basically areas of wealth and, and high resources.
But it, it is a defined term for you all.
It is, it is the defined term, yes.
Okay.
And we don't have any in the city, but what we can do is, of course, provide a census tract map showing, you know, household income.
The next one relates to the milestones. I, I think this is a really, really important comment, and I don't think it should be glossed over. I know there has been some concern about the fact that with some of the goals and programs that there is either kind of wishy washy, for lack of a better word in my head right now, language, or it says, well, you should consider doing this, or maybe we're going to do this in the future for a thing, or. So I'd really like us to go back and look at our goals priority, our goals and programs, and make sure that everything has either some kind of measuring stick as to what we're actually looking for, whether we're actually going to do it or not. So I think this is actually a fairly significant item. Moving on to the SSI, we also had a lot of comments from the public on the SSI and the realistic capacity. I mean, to me, looking at our realistic capacity seems like a fairly big item, and making sure that we both have enough to meet the, our number plus any of the, the cushion that we have. So I think that's important. Now what this comment I wrote means. And then one of the things that the HCD letter talks about that I didn't hear anyone mention relates to the replacement policy. So are we going to add a new replacement policy? Are we going to just basically say that we're going to rely on the state replacement that is in SB 330, a density bonus? How are we going to deal with that? So did we actually, so that's actually a question. So can some answer that?
Yeah, that you're actually jumping a little bit of ahead where that will be, that was in section B. And so we haven't gotten to that in section A. But yes, to, to answer your question, we will be including a, a program that establishes that policy.
So on the question about the 30 du's per acre for the SSI, did we assume that all of the zoning for the sites would be at least 30 du's per acre?
No, not all of the sites, all of the sites in the mixed use commercial zones. But of course, R2, R3, or 4, we did not assume the, it wasn't, it wasn't calculated on units per acre. What we did was we applied FARs and translated the number of units possible into the number of units per acre.
So if we're not assuming, and I might be confusing two different things, but if we're not assuming 30 du's per acre, then do we have to make certain findings as to why we're not?
So, so let me back up. So when we calculated the, the, the number of units that you could get from the, the FAR at a site, we took the number of units and then translated that to units per acre. And what we found was that all of our, pretty much all of our mixed use, all of our mixed use zones in the downtown and Bergama all have density that allows, or FARs that allow for more than 30 units per acre. And per state law, or we are allowed to assume that those sites are suitable for lower income households.
Thank you. With regards to the consolidation issue, it seems to me like that speaks directly to the lot type issue that we've talked about before. So it seems like that's something that could be added. On the land use control, so what I heard Ross say was that we're basically going to beef up the housing element with regards to what the incentives are that we're giving people to develop, right? But in fact, I think what this is asking for is also what the constraints are. And we have received a ton of comments from the public about what some of these constraints are. And so I, I don't think we can just say, well, here's the incentive. I think we have to talk about, right? Here are the things that are constraints. Those constraints include the ground floor provision on units. It includes floor to floor, right? All of the things that we've heard as I read this section, that is in fact what we need to provide.
Sure, we will make sure we definitely take a look at some of those comment letters and add those topics in. So they, it's reflective on that's why we are proposing, you know, development standard changes.
Great, thank you, Ross. On the local processing and procedures, I'm going to bring up the, the issue that we've been talking about for a while, which is whether or not the city interprets that it is subject to SB 330 for minister project. And we're saying that we're not subject to it, that I think that is a constraint that has to be talked about, as well as our implementation of the density bonus ordinance. Because I think that those are, those are issues with our permit and processing procedures. And then on the code enforcement, is it code enforcement or was it code constraint?
So code enforcement was.
It says codes and enforcement. And that occurred to me that one of the potential constraints should be the, the number of stories that we talked about with regards to the fire issue, and what's a definition of a high risk. So those are my comments. Who wants to go next, or Lambert? Then Commissioner Reed.
Okay, did you call on me?
I did.
Okay. I want to go by just something that Lisa touched on. HCD talks about consolidation of lots or tying lots together. Our code actually prohibits that for non residential properties and, and limits the consolidation result to 15,000 square feet. Are we going to have to amend that to comply with what HCD is looking for?
I mean, I think their, their, their comments with regards to the consolidation was they were, we, when we had picked the SSI sites, we were picking sites that were large enough to accommodate a housing project. But if they weren't big enough, for example, if there was two parcels side by side owned by a same, a common owner, then they, we put those two sites on the SSI. And so that's what they were referring to in terms of consolidation, I think.
A, a large, a large site may involve more than one, two parcels, say, so there may have to be a consolidation of a large site.
Right.
Anyway, it's just, it's something to look at. Back to the SSI. Fifty percent of our number basically is non vacant sites. And I remember from the HCD guidelines that there is like a one page form that is, they recommend to fill out for each non vacant site in terms of whether there are impediments that would stand in the way of housing redevelopment, not redevelopment for housing. Did we do that for every non vacant site?
I don't know if it was a form, but I mean, that really was our filtering process. When we did the filtering process, we looked at the age of the building, we looked at the AVR, we looked at what was on it, we looked at the ownership of the, of the parcel. And so it was, I mean, that basically was our, our, our form that HCD wanted to fill out was our filtering process. That's how we got to the SSI was we looked at all these factors that, that made the site suitable or highly suitable for residential development.
I guess long term leases, I would think, would fall in that bucket.
Yeah, and unfortunately, given, you know, staff, resources, and time, we simply just don't have the capacity to call every, you know, property owner to, you know, to, to, to see if they're going to turn over. You know, a lot of our, a lot of the selection of sites, like I said, was based on those objective factors that we had gone through about filtering. And then we also, you know, using staff knowledge and, you know, you know, and, and, you know, kind of our own experiences with, with past housing projects, we, we took all of that, and that's how we made the site selection.
I guess what, what made me focus on that is Fourth and Arizona. I mean, as you probably know, there's a bank lease that expires in 2025, and the city has debt on that property and will for a very long time. And the other bank is looking for an extension of their lease. I would consider those impediments to development. So I don't know if that's the sort of thing you looked at when you included that site on the city owned SSI portion.
Well, for the city owned sites, we certainly did look at all the leases. That's primarily a reason why we didn't include the site that was the TOD site right at the downtown station because of a long term lease there. For the Fifth and Arizona, you know, For the Fifth and Arizona, you know, the lease, as you said, does expire within the planning period. So so that was left in there. So we did for the city owned site, look at our own lease terms because we were able to. For the other sites that are privately owned, we are not able to just call every property owner possible.
Now, and then the other issue HCD raised and Lisa touched on this. Do we, from the non vacant sites, do we have a an idea of the displacement of tenants, residential tenants on those sites?
So the way that the the way that the SSI was done was that we first took out all basically sites that had residential because, you know, that was in align with our preservation policy. So actually, none of our sites that are on the SSI have residential uses with the with the exception of two. And the two and the two, two sites are because we know that there's been interest expressed. All the others that have residential uses on it are either approved or pending. And so that's why those were included.
But HCD asked for a replacement housing program, so I'm assuming.
Right, which we will do, yes. And that will be that will be added to our housing element.
And then the the capacity analysis, that is not based on current zoning of each individual site, is it?
No, it is based on our proposed rezoning.
Oh, so we know, know that some of these sites are going to have to be rezoned, and that will be before us at some point.
Correct. So when we, when we came to you in the, I don't know how many meetings ago, we provided kind of an analysis of what the what the capacity is with under current zoning and then under new zoning. And so we, we with the new proposed FARs and height, we would be able to achieve the arena with without upzoning, we would not.
Okay. And then they call for an SB 35 process that we have not included. How is that different from what should be the SB 330 preliminary application process? Is SB 35 subject to same entitlement review, even though it's administrative approval as SB 330 projects? Or do they just go directly to the building counter?
Sorry, can you repeat that question? Are you?
Is SB 35, is that something that would fall within our administrative approval process and maybe take up to two years between application and building permit being pulled? Or is that supposed to be a faster project under state law?
So for I, I think, I I don't want to conflate different laws and local process.
It's on SB 35.
Yeah, so for SB 35, as as you know, the city is not aware, is not subject to SB 35 at the moment. I know it's just, excuse me. So SB 35, you know, we we certainly anticipate that going forward, we will be subject to it, given how high the arena allocation is and the reality of being able to report that, you know, that the city has actually produced those units over time. So in preparation for that, you know, we're working on objective standards and certainly will follow the requirements of SB 35, which which put forth an expedited process, provided that applicants meet certain preconditions. So, you know, but but like I said, we are moving towards, and it's a housing element program to have minister overview of all housing projects that are co compliant.
Minister, I'm needing administrative approval.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So SB 35 would be subject to that same process? Right?
Again, that's. You kind of had specific timelines last week.
What?
Right.
I got you, I got you. And then just a question about ADUs, which I think has become sort of a tempest in a teapot. Why did, if I read it correctly, why did HCD not allow us to count ADUs for which permits have been issued?
Well, they they are allowing, they're asking us to only count our ADU projection based off of permits that are issued. We included in progress because we.
I thought they had dropped the permit column, too.
No, 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 they're asking us to drop the in progress column, which we can still do, yeah.
Which is kind of odd, because on the SSI, the larger projects, we were allowed to include those. Our pipeline project.
We we too also thought in progress was kind of showing kind of the the projection and the interest, but they would like to have more concrete numbers.
That's, those are all my questions. Thank you.
All right, so I think I was.
Yes, Commissioner Reese, thank you.
Um, I can go quickly because I think most of mine have been touched on. I am a little surprised that we don't have an area of affluence in our community, but so I'd be, I will go back and look for that definition. When there's another section here that talks about fees and fees for development, we really focused on the CUP and the affordable for the small projects. But, you know, my memory of going through the loose is there were some trade offs that kind of the community wasn't really overly excited about development, but we were going to exact, you know, get a lot of exactions with these different fees. So I think there's a lot of other things you should be looking at. I mean, we have a wide range of fees from, you know, school fees to affordable housing, to open space, to childcare, just to name a few. So I think those need to be looked at as well as and determine whether those are impediments because my sense is those are a little higher than other cities. I could be wrong, but my sense is you will find those to be a little higher. Not totally appropriate, but when you're talking about these lot consolidations, I'm hoping that we're looking at thing, other things that prohibit lot consolidation, like when we're looking at A lots and if they were all residential and if we had the unexcavated, you had them unexcavated side yard. You know, that would certainly stop any kind of sub training and development if you're consolidating, which could be a problem. So that should be put on the table. I agree that the codes and enforcement section is a perfect opportunity to talk about the high rise issue that keeps getting brought up. That's all I have right now for this section.
Can I ask a quick question, actually? Keen and Sean, then I'll respond to you. So Jim mentioned the fees, and I noticed in the red lines that there are fees that we're proposing to impose. Do you have to, or do we have to analyze the impact of the programs that we're going to adopt as well? You understand my question?
So this, the 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 chapter on constraints, it's about existing constraints. And there's an entire chapter that actually talks in detail about the fees.
Yes, thank you so much.
And everything that's being discussed, yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Commissioner Landrath.
I will also try to keep mine brief. I want to come back to the to the areas of affluence question. I have been Googling this, and I have, what I have found is a reference to areas of racially concentrated affluence and and which has to do with census tracts. And so it'd be helpful for us to get the definition. The reason that I'm asking is because there was, it appeared that there was some suggestion in the letter, and perhaps I misunderstood it, that our fair housing obligations were not limited to race related fair housing issues, but also economically related fair housing. So it would be very helpful to understand whether this, the references to areas of affluence in the letter are referring to racially racially concentrated areas of affluence, which I understand from the definition that we would not have because we're talking about like 90% white neighborhoods. And I don't think we have a single 90% white neighborhood in the in the city. But if we are expected to talk about economic affluence, I'm sort of with with Vice Chair Reese in in my surprise that we don't have that 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 discussion. And I'd be curious to know, this is my first question, what exactly we are supposed to analyze and attempt to address? And then it will lead to my second.
So so if if I can address that that question, and I apologize.
No, please, that'd be great.
The, yeah, because I I actually did look at this in detail, and it is, you kind of have to jump to several different places. But I I do recall there being, it wasn't just about race, it was also economics. And like you, I also was somewhat surprised. I was kind of expecting that, you know, we might find RCCAs in in Santa Monica. But I I recall that the what what they defined in terms of a household income threshold was actually higher than, you know, any any particular area in Santa Monica. That's what I remember. We actually did look at this in in detail, and we are trying to find that information. But we actually did have that definition. I recall it was a couple of factors. It wasn't just one or the other.
Okay. Thank you, Jing. No, I appreciate that. And it sort of leads to my second question, which which has to do with many of the things that I understood the letter to be asking for. My understanding is that the state legislature is asking for through a number of bills that are headed to the governor's desk. Some of them are things that, you know, we've we've not directly talked about here, but have been on everyone's mind, SB nine, SB 10. Some of them are things that are not going to the governor's desk. I mourn the loss of AB 1401. Hopefully, it'll come back next year. But there are other technical bills like SB eight that address, say, the preliminary, the vesting of preliminary applications or the, you know, clarify some of the displacement protections that are currently in SB 330. And obviously, the legislature feels needs further clarification. So my question is actually twofold. One is essentially, what is the impact of pending state legislation on our housing element? That's number one. Number two, what is the expectation of HCD with respect to the effect that statewide legislation will have on our affirmative efforts to make changes in the availability of housing, protections against displacement, or the furthering of fair housing? In other words, are we now going to be, if the state takes care of it for us, do is it simply enough for us to say, okay, we'll follow the law? Or is HCD going to turn around and say, no, 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 this is for everybody, now you all have to go two steps further? That that's what would be helpful for me to understand. Because I, my sense, based on, I mean, I I personally think that passing AB 1401 would have done a lot more for Santa Monica housing production than, say, passing SB nine. But passing SB nine effectively upzones our R1 neighborhoods and does what HCD is asking us to do in terms of addressing fair housing with respect to R1. So I'm a little confused about where we go from here. And I know that none of these have been signed, but they're going to get signed in the middle of us doing this. And by the time the council meets on the 12th, these will have been signed or not signed, so.
Good, it's a good question. We have the same questions. You know, we, so we actually had one call with HCD's reviewers before they they released the letter, but there wasn't with the hundreds of housing elements they're needing to review this year. You know, cities are really not getting the chance. Normally, we'd have a back and forth, have an opportunity to address things before they release the letter. So I will say, having that phone call, and I think it's part of why, you know, we're, we feel like, you know, very confident that we can address all their issues because, you know, what we heard from them is, you know, once we're able to clarify certain things, they're like, oh, that makes sense. You know, it just needs to be in writing. And I think, you know, we understand that perspective, given, like I said, they are taking a new enforcement role. And if it's not written in paper, it's, you know, how would somebody know? You know, but that's what's happening in Santa Monica. That's what we're going to do. With respect to to AFFH, you know, like I said, it's it's a new thing. And it looks like SB nine and SB 10 are, you know, through their, through the legislature, it's, you know, heading to to the governor. Certainly, it looks like they will, that they will pass. And if that is the case, I think that is a question. We do have another call with HCD to clarify particularly their AFFH comments, you know, just to understand what they're looking for. And we will be asking that question is, you know, what's the effect of something like that? You know, is that sufficient, you know, or is there something else? You know, because as you're aware, at the local level, you know, before the draft housing element, we had, of course, discussed programs, you know, such as affordable housing overlay across the city. You know, staff had had put forth an idea with respect to targeted upzoning in R1 areas. You know, are we needing to return to discussing those those possibilities? I think we're trying to get clarity because it's not like we didn't put forth these ideas or talk about it in a public forum. We absolutely did. And, you know, this was ultimately the draft housing elements, what, you know, council directed toward. You know, but we, here we are with the comments. And now we'll have to, you know, kind of work through on how we we address the comments they're putting forth. So it's a good question, you know, and you're not the only one who's wondering about the effect of that.
And and will you be able to ask? So thank you. Will you be able to ask them about the the economic piece as well when you have your AFFH conversation with them?
Sure, yeah, we we can do that. And incidentally, if I can just go back to the racially concentrated areas of affluence, I did find in my email, so we found it. So what it is, is there was a definition that was created in in 2019, and then HCD adjusted it because it had been, you know, to for its use in in current form. And they, it looked like they adjusted it to 80% white in order for something to be classified in an RCA, 80% white and a median income of $132,844 to account for inflation. So that's the the precise definition. And when we. 132,844. Median income and 80% white is is the qualities that a census tract would have to meet to to be classified as an RCA. And it's actually mapped on their website as well.
And we don't have any of those.
We do not, no.
Thank you. Those are my questions for section eight.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Raskin, then Commissioner Fonda Benner.
Thank you. First of all, could I just ask if it's possible at some point to post this presentation publicly? It does a great job of condensing some complex issues in a helpful way. And the second question, so I understand that you're going to be going back to.
Mr. Raskin, sorry, just to answer that question, Melissa has already posted it under item 9A. So it is, if the public refreshes their agenda, it should be there.
Fantastic, thank you so much. And so I understand that you're going to go back to council for more direction about addressing some of the comments about affirmatively furthering fair housing. Is that going to happen before council takes final action in October? Or what's what's the timeframe for that?
For, sorry, what was that for the affirmably furthering for housing or for the assessment of your housing?
Well, if you're going to get, yeah, more direction from council, I'm just curious how that how the timing of that is going to work.
So so the timing will be, so the 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 timing of this is, of course, that the planning commission makes its recommendation to the council, you know, based on information you have. So, you know, obviously, tonight, we're not talking about the the final housing element for adoption. We're here to, you know, talk about the the letter and our proposed response to that. So, you know, we we hope that we'll get more clarity with our call tomorrow. We can certainly return to the planning commission with more information, you know, that that we get on that. Certainly, when staff brings back the the final housing element with further red lines in response to HCD's comments, it will reflect our latest and greatest conversations with them and our best understanding of how we might be able to address the the comments they made. And of course, then ultimately, the planning commission will have its discussion and its recommendation. And then the council will, you know, make the the final decision as to how to address and implement the AFFH requirement.
Got it. I think I might have misunderstood. I was under the impression that you'd be going to our city council for further direction before the final adoption meetings. But that would have been tough with the timing.
Yeah.
Okay. And then just with respect to the capacity calculations, back back when we had our initial conversations about calculating build out, I had some concerns about using the metric of 1,050 square feet per unit as the the number that we would use to calculate. I thought that was a little bit high. Is there any chance to revisit that now? Or can we at least add in some commentary about how that's a rather high number?
Sure, actually, you're you were, you were correct, Commissioner Raskin. We did go back to look at the number. And actually, I had provided incorrect information. The number that we used was actually 700 square feet per unit. So that the capacity calculation that was submitted to HCD was based on the 700 square feet.
Okay, okay. And then with respect to the comment about metrics and milestones for programs that affirmatively further fair housing, I wonder if we can maybe highlight some of the work that the rent board is doing to monitor the. the preservation of rent controlled housing and the 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 programs that that their legal counsel has implemented and our city attorney's office has implemented to enforce our rent control laws and fair housing laws. I feel like that's something that, you know, we can quantify, you know, the number of enforcement actions we've had, and it's something that we might be able to add in with relative ease. And the rest of my questions have been answered. So that's all I've got for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Yes. I have a, I have a meta question here. It seems that there's a lot of requests for information by HCD, and information is hard to acquire in the format that they want or pointing to the things they're trying to solve. And sometimes it's unclear. So someone came to you and said, well, how much time does it take to go from your approval of your administrative approvals of whatever kind and your application of building permit? That's entirely out of the city's hand. There's no incentive that we can do to make architects draw faster, make engineers calculate faster. It's almost an irrelevant number. Why does, and I'll use this as an example, why does the state care about that particular metric? How does it help in our production or in our achievement of our goals?
So I think that's just information that the state asks, and and it's it's something that they ask for in the constraints chapter because, again, the constraints chapter is a snapshot of, you know, moment in time of like, how are things right now in terms of housing production and, you know, all aspects of it. And and, you know, as as, you know, we often hear from applicants, you know, the most important thing that they want to know is, you know, how long is it going to take? And, you know, you're correct that it's not a one way street. It's a, it's a process that's back and forth between the city and the applicant. And I think the city has taken great strides to try and make that process as streamlined as possible. And it's obviously a work in progress. But as to what HCD is interested in is, you know, they they simply want to understand, you know, what does the process look like in Santa Monica? This is, you know, something we feel we can address quite easily. We've looked at other housing elements. You know, it's it's in terms of what what they put. And I think most people, you know, they tend to put kind of like what's statutory within their municipal code, or if they happen to have the data, they might provide that. But it certainly varies pretty dramatically from from project to project. I will say for for us, you know, there's a standard like two years from the time you have your entitlement to holding a building permit. And I think generally speaking, you know, for administrative approvals, I think we see it, you know, generally, like if it's well submitted, a complete application, it can be through in, you know, roughly about like fourish months, you know, to get through their entitlement. Then there's the design review. So I think what HCD wants to understand is just sort of that beginning to end process. You know, again, if you look at it from their perspective as a state agency, you know, they don't have like, you know, transparent visibility into what every city in California is doing. And, you know, they've been, we've certainly seen housing bills where there's a desire to create like a sort of almost statewide, like master database, you know, of how things happen in cities. So I think this is just some of the work they're looking at. But again, it's really about identifying and explaining how current process works.
Right. But I guess what I'm saying is they're asking you to do research on something we have no control over, and it's not the right number. The number we should look at is the time it takes to go from, let's say, administrative approvals of all different kinds, but actually issuing a building permit. They're just asking you for the time that the project is out of the city's hands. They may mean it hasn't even submitted and submitted for a building permit. So I guess what I'm asking is, they're asking us to do research about stuff that is kind of irrelevant. And they're also asking us to do research on things that are actually kind of too rubbery to to get a real number. For instance, the housing element must go to analysis of the condition of the existing housing stock and estimate the number of units in need of rehab and replacement. Do we have a number for that? Where would that number come from? You know, there's forty thousand odd, fifty thousand odd units in the city. How would we guess the number that need rehab versus the number that are so far gone, they have to be replaced?
Right. And and this was something we had talked with the reviewers about, you know, they were asking about whether there's local data or some, you know, windshield survey. And we said, no, you know, there's not, we don't, we don't have the resources to pay thousands and thousands of buildings throughout the city. So, you know, we're, you know, I think it's, this is, you know, we do the best we can. We have the data that we have. And I think they understood that, right? Not, we're certainly not alone in terms of not not knowing the state of every single housing unit in the entire city. That's wouldn't be something we have the capacity to do. But what we certainly do have is that we have, it's more of a complaint driven process where, you know, people may report substandard living conditions. We're trying to work with code enforcement, you know, to see if that data is available because they certainly, when they investigate cases, they may come across that. And we also have a a temporary, or through through the temporary relocation program when tenants are affected by work and what have you, sometimes that information comes to light. And also, for people who participate in in city funded or assistance programs, you know, there's also a requirement there to understand the the quality and the standard of the living condition. So there are, in some ways, like we have these different avenues, you know, where we start to get some idea of 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 units, but it's not enough data probably to extrapolate and say, you know, it's a generality across the whole city. You know, so that's kind of the way that we would approach that that comment.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is there's a lot of where from very tiny little data points, say, the number of complaints from tenants, tenants, you're supposed to generalize about a city, knowing full well that a lot of tenants are afraid to complain about substandard conditions because they're afraid either their rent will go up or they'll be pushed out. So what I'm saying is they're asking us to walk on ice with, you know, bad data, and then we get, you know, basically garbage in, garbage out. And so moving on, they've asked us to the demand, the current market demand for existing uses on non vacant site. That's the sixty four thousand dollar question. What is the demand for stores and restaurants and, you know, factories? Who has that data? That's sort of a, in a changing world, that's very hard to to put your finger on. And yet, they're asking the city to do that and come up with some sort of master analysis for different uses. You know, if there's a bakery on a site, does that mean that we got to figure out, well, what's the demand for bakeries in the city? See where I'm going with this? It seems there's asking us to do a lot of work that is very difficult to do. And and therefore, will be done either not at all or poorly. And I'm wondering where the cutoff point is with limited staff.
So so I think that, you know, the 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 data requests are asking about existing uses. We we actually did, you know, we spent weeks going through every parcel in the city, looking at existing land uses. Obviously, we do not have lease information. If people happen to offer that up through the process, great. But, you know, we certainly can't possibly know what is happening on every private property in the city. But we certainly made our best effort to take a look at that. And that and that was, but what that's, that's what Rachel was explaining is that all of that was actually inherently part of the process. You know, we we just perhaps, you know, didn't explain it very clearly as to what was, what what kind of fed into all of those filters and consideration of existing uses. And then, you know, some of this is art. It's not all science. It's, you know, planners who work in the city for a really long time. And we have that, you know, sense of, you know, what's been invested in and, you know, what might stay long term and what have you. So, you know, I think we just kind of, you know, did our work there. And I think we just, we just kind of show a mash, so to speak. But it's not like, you know, none of those factors were considered because they, they were a part of the process.
Okay, last question. We have three hundred and thirty four parcels on our suitable site inventory. And how, how many units does that translate to? And I assume your measuring stick is seven hundred square feet per unit. Is that, is that accurate? Is that the accurate measuring stick?
Yes, that's about, that's correct. Except for, I think, for the R two, R three, we assume something slightly different, of course.
Okay. And does that seventy, seven hundred square foot, is that the gross, meaning including stairwells and laundries and rec rooms? Or is that the actual unit? And then you add a percent for all the common spaces?
We, we, it was gross, I believe. Yes.
Okay. So that's a pretty, pretty low number. But be that as it may, of the three hundred and thirty four parcel using that type of number spread out over the possible heights and densities and FARs of each site, how many, how many units does three hundred and thirty four parcels translate to?
Well, our SSI came out with a capacity of approximately ten thousand units or so. I don't know the exact number at the top of my head, but it was roughly ten thousand, ten thousand units. And that provided a, I think, a four, twenty four percent buffer.
Okay. And when we actually looked at how we did in the last guessing game of suitable sites in the last inventory, apparently, one third of those sites were actually developed and a whole bunch of other sites were not, were developed that were not on our our suitable sites inventory. So do you think that ratio will stay the same in the future?
I mean, I, this is all, I mean, this, the SSI was our best attempt at, you know, kind of forecasting what will likely turn over. I mean, of course, conditions change over time. You know, we have no idea if if our best guesses are are correct. I mean, I think it's your guess as good as mine.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Commissioner Fresco, do you have any questions or comments? No? Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and move on to B. It's in boy.
So section B of the letter talks about the housing programs. And as I previewed in the beginning, the comments really speak to wanting more specificity and commitment. You know, they, there's not a a preference for what I'll call like sort of soft language, you know, about exploring options or what have you, or just kind of leaving things open ended. HCD is definitely looking for commitment and timeline, you know, when are you going to do it? What exactly are you going to be doing? So with the first comment, this was about the programs to identify sites to demonstrate that that you have a zone capacity. So the first comment was about really a shortfall of sites indicating some sites will need to be rezoned. And so they said here that the programs have to specifically commit to acreage allowable densities anticipated units. In looking at how other certified housing elements have have approached this, it really looks to us like, you know, what we need to put is like the summary table, you know, of the resulting summary of acreage that's being rezoned or can be organized by zone. We have all of this data. We could organize it any which way. We can certainly show what the maximum FARs are going to be, you know, what the rezoning is going to be and the anticipated units. We have all of that information. So we would include a table tabulating precisely that. And we would also add more detail about, you know, here's what the new FARs and heights will be for housing projects. So that would affect programs one E, one F, and four B. So it'll be much more specific, you know, instead of a general statement that, you know, we are updating FARs to support affordable units. Their their second comment here had to do with streamlined approval for housing projects. And this is really about the reuse of sites in in previous cycles. This is a, it's not a requirement. It's more like if if somebody, if an applicant shows up and opts in to provide twenty percent affordable housing in their project, the city is required to process that project by right. The net effect of of it on on our process is really not not that much since we are proposing a by right process for for housing projects anyways. But, you know, that's what we would clarify here is to stipulate that ministerial for all housing projects, it's a program that's already being implemented. So we have a program like that already. And then I think what they were looking for here is really just more an acknowledgement of that of that particular part of state law. And so that's a, that's a simple fix. Next slide. The next comment has to do with the replacement housing requirements. And this is, the comment here is about including a program to require that housing projects on SSI, SSI sites to provide replacement housing that have affordable or rent controlled units in the past five years. This applies to non vacant sites, of which that's every site in Santa Monica. We really don't have any site in Santa Monica that needs the definition of vacant, since even a blank parking lot is not considered vacant under their eyes. So this is just a new program that that we would add. And, you know, it's something that we would have done anyways. With regards to the next comment about city owned sites, it appears here that the reviewer may have misunderstood the right of first offer ordinance and conflated it with city owned sites. They're really two completely separate things. So I think that the comment here is a little bit confusing, but I think we, reading the part about the city owned site, the second part, you know, where it says, we should go beyond just assessing properties and commit to steps in a schedule to facilitate development on city owned sites. We have seen in other housing elements that, you know, what has been done is just kind of strengthening that program language. So of course, we don't necessarily know, you know, what what a schedule of development on city owned sites is going to be because it's subject to a public process. And it's hard to say like exactly what it's going to be. But, you know, certainly, one of the things that we may be able to commit to is, you know, issuing an RFP, you know, for that, for that site, committing, you're showing commitment that, and this is what council was discussing and directed, you know, was to prioritize affordable housing on city owned sites. So that is, you know, probably a way that we can address that comment to to give some commitment with respect to to city owned sites beyond just the assessment of them. The second portion of their comments on housing programs had to do with affordable housing finance and and programs. And so this is our, the the comment here was about commitment to pursue and assist with funding or supporting funding applications on a regular basis. You know, this is one where, you know, when when we discussed with them, they were like, we know you guys do this. We know you have a housing trust fund. You just need to say, you know, so this is really somewhere in the background, we have to specify that, you know, obviously, has a housing trust program, leverage that against against other other funding sources to produce affordable housing. And so we would just adjust the program language to acknowledge that and that we continue to do that. Next slide. The the next comment has to do with streamlining the design review process, program one B. This is, the the comment here is really about the the findings for ARB approval, that they seem very subjective and vague and could be applied in different ways. And I think we acknowledge that, you know, that the findings certainly could be improved. But we would want to clarify in the program language that we are working on creating objective design standards. You know, we feel like that would address the concern regarding findings and also demonstrate that historically, the design review process has not been used, has has not, has not been used, you know, in the in the context of reducing density or denying a housing project. It's really a process that occurs after the land use entitlement is already granted. And the design review process is not something that's used to deny projects. So that's something we feel that we can clarify. The comment on program one D, which is exploring or reducing or eliminating parking requirements, with this one, I think with the reduce or eliminate, and, you know, with discussions at council, there was certainly an openness to doing this. And the line commission discussed it as well. This is limited largely to the transit priority areas. Staff's recommendation here would maybe to consider to give this more commitment would be just to say that reduced parking requirements specified in parking overlay one, you know, would just apply to all housing projects. You know, that's just a suggested approach as we were looking through something like that. And it's certainly something that we can discuss further as to whether that is appropriate. I would note that at the moment, within the parking requirements, there there is already an avenue for uses on non residential sites to request parking overlay one rates. It's just provided that they provide like TD and things like that. So this is not something that's brand new, certainly. It would just be something that is offered to housing projects only. Next slide. This comment has to do with the program four D and affirm, and affirmatively furthering fair housing. And this is one that you heard me, you know, talk about with the overview. This is certainly an area that will need to have further discussion in terms of the cities. city's commitment, meaningful commitment to show actions to overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities. So here, you know, like we said, we could certainly revise existing programs, but this is an area that we would, you know, be seeking clarity from HCD on in terms of what they're looking for. Cause you can see there, you know, we have discussed concept of a hundred percent affordable housing overlay across the city, expanding housing opportunities are one. Those are all things that have been discussed. And, you know, is that something that we, we have to bring back into our housing element is something we would be seeking verification on. And then finally, next slide. This is regarding program 3C, which is about facilitating, facilitating the conservation of restricted and non-restricted at-risk housing units. So the program right now commits the city to annual monitoring of its affordable housing at-risk stock. So we already do this in terms of monitoring at-risk units. We have a list, you know, it's been provided in the housing element already. And we are active in working with landlords, you know, we, we have a, a good track record with respect to particularly senior housing units where the city has worked with a property owner to have team project-based vouchers have a good outcome for everybody. So this is what the city has already done and we continue to do. Feel like that can again be something that can be addressed. So that is section B. And if you'd like to pause, we certainly can before.
Yeah, let's pause. Thank you, Jing. Is there someone who wants to start us off on this? B. Isn't Boyd Leslie?
I just have a, a question. I'm not trying to be confrontational. It just seems odd to me that we say that ministerial projects are, are by right. But as it stands right now, unless they have a tentative track map, they don't vest until building permits. So how is that by right?
I think we're talking about the processes by rights. So as long as you meet the objective standards, you, you receive your entitlement.
That's my point, but the objectives standards aren't put in place until the building permit's issued. So I, I just don't understand the thinking on that.
I'm, I, I think that's not quite right. Like once, if the, if, i- i- if the rules change for some reason in the course of a project being processed, you know, I, I, I can't think of a situation where the city reached back, apply it to something that was already approved. There's an applicability clause whenever rules change, you know, that, that typically states that, you know, projects that are pending or that, you know, applications that were submitted by a certain date or they're approved, you know, can move forward. But it's for, for the issuance of an administrative approval, it's just based on the standards that were in place at the time the application was submitted. It's reviewed against that. So.
I understand, but during, during plan check, if those standards change, isn't the project then subject to those changes?
Unless, a, a, again, that's, that's what I was saying is that even if it's in plan check, if, if there are standards that change, the city has historically always established an applicability clause that doesn't just unfairly capture people that are already, you know, days away from getting a building permit. That's not typically a practice we've, we've ever done. I guess in, in theory you, you could, but we've just not done that.
I'm not talking about days away from a permit. I'm talking just beginning plan check.
Are you, are you talking about building codes or zoning codes?
Zoning codes.
Okay. Yeah. A, a, again, it has to do with the applicability clause. It doesn't, I, I'm not aware of a situation where the, the rules just changed on some, some, somebody after the project was already approved and then we reached back and attempted to change that.
That's interesting. Okay.
Do you have anything else, Leslie? Just following up on that though, I mean, it, because this does seem to be an issue that a lot of people are concerned about. I might suggest that there are other cities that have provisions in their code that basically vest you at the time of submission of your building plans and payment of your plan check fee. And so is that, might suggest that that's a, a, a specific program or element that we could put into our, into our code as part of the red lines. I'll just go, cause now I'm talking. Steph, when you come back with the revised housing element, I'm going to suggest that you provide a table, either a table that shows an annotation of where you're addressing each of the comments. So it's easy to look at what the comment is and then where you say you've addressed it. And I think that will be helpful, not only for us, but for HCD to really show them, right? Here's where we addressed your comment. And either a table or you could even do it as an annotation to the letter. So that's something I'd really like to see that we can go through these. And, you know, I think it's not just a table of, to show the, the implementation. It's really making commitments in all of our programs that I, I think I should have actually, I know I made the comment in the last, in section A, but it's really a better comment for here that we need to really commit the things that we're going to do in the housing element and not use such wishy-washy language. I question whether or not we really know what the FARs are today. I think that's part of the conversation that we're going to have in the next agenda item. But I, I really like the idea of including that specificity within the housing element. So I think that's great. Can you refresh my memory on parking overlay one? Or what were you saying about the parking modification?
The parking overlay one, the, the parking standards in the zoning code are divided between parking overlay one and parking overlay two. And parking overlay one generally represents like kind of the half mile around the expo stations and major transit. So there were reduced parking standards citywide within parking overlay one, you know, acknowledging obviously access to transit, walkability and, and those sorts of things. What I was saying with respect to reduced parking requirements, there, there is an allowance within chapter 9.28 in the zoning ordinance that says that non-residential properties within parking overlay two may be eligible to provide parking at the overlay one rates, provided that they, they, they can demonstrate compliance with TDM requirements and that the parking to be supplied like the reduced rate would meet the needs of the onsite uses and kind of any, any other agreements that are necessary to ensure that the parking meets the needs of the onsite uses. So it just goes through that process. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is, so you mentioned a couple of times that when you look at other housing elements, are you looking at adopted housing elements from the last cycle as models? Or are you saying you're looking at other house elements that are in draft form?
No, it's, it's housing elements in this cycle. In some, some are, some are in draft. Some are, some have been in second draft in response to comments.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Who wants to go next? Commissioner Landos.
Okay, I will try to keep this brief again. Just a quick one. So I'll, I'll just say, I really hope that we get credit for our local financing measures. Just really explicitly. We've, we've passed two, frankly, we've, we've passed multiple taxes. I mean, we, not only have we passed, you know, a transfer tax recently, we published, we've, we've passed a sales tax, a sales and use tax that, that directly funds our, our housing trust fund. But, you know, when it comes to paying for infrastructure to support housing, you could argue that half of YNYY actually is a tax that facilitates the funding of government services ancillary to housing. So I, I really hope that that is, that that is acknowledged and made explicit because I was, I will say, I was a little bit disturbed by the implication that we haven't sufficiently addressed our, our, our financing, our financing issues. So that's just a comment. I also think, and this links back to, this, this links back to my earlier comments about the impact of pending state legislation, but something that I hope that we will be able to do, and I thank Commissioner Lambert for mentioning this in earlier meetings, I'm looking at section B four and in particular, but also section B three, 1D, the parking. We said very clearly, two pieces. One thing that Commissioner Lambert pointed out earlier is that with respect to segregation issues, we, our schools are not segregated. And I think that's really, really important to stress in terms of how populations are organized in Santa Monica. In some respects, some of the schools in what is considered our Pico neighborhood are some of, have some of the most desirable programs in the city for people across the city. So I think it's important to say that explicitly because I don't think HCD has fully gropped to, to the level of social integration outside of housing integration that occurs in our city. I'm not saying it's perfect. I'm not saying we're amazing. We're pretty darn good. And I think we should take some credit for it. But I also think it's very important, we had a conversation when we, when we declined the staff recommendation to upzone seventh, 14th and 26th. And we said instead, we want to take the parking lots that are in, we want to take the A lots and the other parking lots that technically are zoned residential are one, and we want to convert those to multifamily housing because we believe that that would be the most effective way to put multifamily housing in the R1 neighborhoods. I think we need to spell that out very explicitly in the housing element because even with the, even assuming SB nine is passed, they're still going to come back at us to find out what, what we're doing about R1. And I think this is what we do about R1 because if we're serious about putting house, enough housing that you could actually have an affordability requirement in those new projects, those parking lots are literally the only places where we can get there. We've, we've documented, you know, nine ways from Sunday that subdividing, subdividing worth of Montana is not going to produce one unit of, of affordable housing. But building on the parking lots that are technically zoned R1, maybe some are zoned R2 actually could. So I just think we need to spell those out much more explicitly in the housing element. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Fresco.
When we first started this process, staff gave us a very detailed report that gave us a bunch of different ways we could go to achieve these goals. And the thing we agreed on in our discussion was that really we needed to do all of it. And I really think that the R1 adjustments are part of all of it. And nobody imagines that R1 is going to be a place where affordable housing is. But it's a really important place for addressing fair housing. And the way it addresses fair housing is by allowing people to choose to have more than one unit. We create more homes and we don't protect those neighborhoods as sanctuaries for people with privilege who can afford to have an entire parcel in this city. So to advocate for R1 asterisk that would allow a duplex in some of these giant buildings that people have built or plan to build in the future that normally would hold a, a single family. So I just wanted to put that out there. I think most of the other things in here, we can discuss better when we discuss the next section, this, the red lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going one? Going Commissioner Lambert.
I, I don't want to repeat the R1 horse anymore than we already have, but I just want to remind everybody that what HRNA found was that duplexes do not pencil north of Montana. And you have to have five or six years to make that work. And if we do an overlay district for affordable housing, you're probably talking, given the land prices, the same density as what we're looking at on the boulevards. So if you're okay with that density in our one neighborhood, then that's another issue.
I can't, I don't know why it doesn't get heard that I'm not talking about providing affordable housing or density. I'm talking about ceasing to protect privilege. It's a different thing.
The point, the HRNA study found that duplexes do not pencil, given the land cost. So you couldn't sell or rent those units if you built them.
So then people won't build them, but at least we know our code won't say these parcels are reserved for this type of person with this type of resources.
Okay, I'm gonna, Commissioner Landos, you can have the last word on this issue because we have talked about this issue extensively. So let's not repeat what we've already.
Agreed. So what I will say is I agree a hundred percent with what Commissioner Fresco just said in her comments following mine. I, if this is not about affordability, this is about, this is about access and, and my point, just for clarity, because I know staff is following what we're talking about here, for clarity, I am, my comments are based on the assumption that SB nine is going to get signed into law. And so there will be little more that the city can actually do affirmatively, or SB 10, although I don't see our council ever, the current council certainly is not going to adopt an SB 10 ordinance. I don't see that happening. I'm saying with respect to what we are doing as a city.
Understood.
My comments earlier stand. Yeah. But I agree with Commissioner Fresco as to the difference between fair housing and affordable housing.
Okay. So let's, unless the other commissioners have comments on section B, let's move on to section C. Charlie.
Okay. Rachel here again. So the section C is pretty simple. They wanted us to provide a quantitative objective for conservation of units. They noted that we provided for one for their rehabilitation of units, but said that we should include a conservation objective since we, they recognized that we already do the conservation of at-risk units. So they wanted us to add that number. So we'll add a conservation objective that reflects the projects already in progress. Next slide. And then the other section that they had wanted us to elaborate on was our discussion of public participation. On our phone call with them, we explained to them all of the outreach efforts we had done for the housing element. So they just wanted us to provide greater detail on how we address public comments and particularly with regards to, and how we did outreach, particularly with regards to other segments of the community. Next slide. And then just finally, lastly, they just provided a note in here saying that the update of the housing element will trigger other kind of state law requirements. And this is just more of an FYI. They recognize that, you know, we're going to be doing things such as the safety element update, but they just wanted to remind us. And also the, that the land use element would need to be updated to identify and analyze disadvantaged communities. So we, we know this and these efforts will occur after we, of course, adopt the housing element. Next slide. And so just to bring it all back and summarize.
Can I, I have on the last slide, I'm sorry. And they actually asked us to do something about, and I, I imagine Commissioner Raskin had something to say about this. They specifically called out environmental justice in their letter. So I'm wondering if staff has any comments on the environmental justice piece.
So, and Heidi, maybe you can jump in here. But as I understand, environmental justice requirement triggers when two or more elements of the general plan are updated concurrently. I don't believe we trigger that requirement, but I'll ask Heidi if she knows.
No, they're, they're saying we are because we're doing our loose in our housing element within, I mean, all, all but simultaneously. We're reopening the loose tonight. No?
Right. So, so I think different jurisdictions and, and actually the planning manager can speak to this have, have been applying that separately. The bottom line is, you know, I think those are all being addressed in a, in a work plan that's going to be, you know, looked at. We can seek direction from council on that as well in terms of priorities after the housing element is updated. Again, this was informational. Again, this was informational to the city because there are, you know, triggers that occur when a housing element updates are done. It's not necessarily related to the housing element update itself, meaning the certification and the process of the housing element is separate and apart from these other ones. They just are triggers for updates to general plan and other elements of the, other elements of the general plan. So, so I think that's kind of where we are at the moment.
And so Rachel, what is, Commissioner Raskin, I'll get to you in just a minute. It also says, also the land use element must identify and analyze disadvantaged on or before the housing element's adoption due date. So.
So I can actually answer that one. That is a very specific and narrow provision that has to do with disadvantaged communities that are within a city's sphere of influence or are generally unincorporated.
Oh, so irrelevant.
Mm-hmm. As far as I understand, yes.
Commissioner Raskin.
Thanks. And, you know, Rachel, Heidi, correct me if I'm wrong, but my, my understanding has been that the city has analyzed to the extent possible through the SEQA process, environmental justice implications of the environmental impacts that are going to happen through the implementation of the housing element. Do I have that wrong?
I'm sorry, can you, I missed the first part of your sentence. Can you repeat?
Sorry. Yeah, I think what's, what's happening through our environmental review process is that we are looking at the environmental justice implications of the environmental impacts that are going to happen through the implementation of the housing elements. And if that's the case, then it might be worth throwing in a sentence or two saying, by, by the way, through our SEQA process, we're looking at the environmental justice implications of all this.
We did analyze displaced, in terms of, if you're talking about environment justice in terms of displacement, yes, we did analyze displacement effects. We also analyzed effects on sensitive communities with regards to air and noise. So yes, I would say that we covered certain issues of environmental justice in our EIR and we could certainly mention that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a memo that the Attorney General's Office put out a few years ago about integrating environmental justice in SEQA. And it might be worthwhile citing to that and saying that, you know, as a community, we're, we're, we're doing our best to look at how all of these things impact disadvantaged communities.
Sure, we'll take a look.
Do we have an environmental justice element?
No, we don't. That requirement actually came into effect after the loose was adopted.
Okay, so does that mean that upcoming we will adopt one?
Right, our intent was to, you know, unless directed by council, we would take it up at the next, like, large, you know, broad general plan update.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Does anybody else have questions on the last three sections? Or comments? So Rachel, you had a summary slide, you were gonna start, I mean.
Sure, yeah, I mean, this is basically, I mean, I think, you know, going through Sections A, B, C, D, and E, I mean, you could tell the things that really are more significant lies within Section B. And so, you know, I think most of the stuff we can address, except for the before, which is HCD's concern about adding, you know, adding actions that meaningfully, affirmatively further fair housing. But I think if you agree with, you know, staff's recommendations on some of the recommended response, we can focus probably our discussion on before. But we could go through it one by one as well.
Well, I don't know that we need to go through. I don't know, I guess I feel like we sort of talked about all of these already, so I'm not inclined to go through them again, but do other commissioners have a different opinion?
Question?
Yeah.
We discussed it, but is staff looking for formal direction here, like actual straw votes? Because we haven't taken them.
I think that we wrote the agenda item to allow you the possibility to, to do that, but, you know, I think in hearing your questions with respect to, to Section B, you know, it seems that, I, I didn't hear objection, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, to, to our recommended approaches to addressing the, these comments. And, you know, as, as Rachel indicated with respect to before, you know, I'm not, I think we, we heard some discussion around that and, you know, a need, a desire for more clarity, you know, as to whether upcoming changes in state legislation, you know, are sufficient, or are there others? I'm, I'm not sure that, you know, the commission is of one mind on that. And that's, you know, I think that, that was the case before.
Thank you, right.
I feel, I feel like, you know, on, on the others, you know, barring any further objection or comment, I think, you know, we, we take that as that you were okay with kind of what we're proposing as an approach and we would, we would bring back the revised language to the commission for your review.
Yeah, I mean, I would emphasize that it's not just what you suggested, but I think that the comments of the commissioners asked you to go above and beyond the suggestions in the report and the suggestions that are on this list. And so I would hope that those are also integrated into the document.
Right, right, yeah, we have, we got notes on those.
Yep. And so what is the then timing for you to come back with an, is that the September twentieth meeting?
That's the September twentieth meeting, yes.
Commissioner Landis.
I just want to say one thing, which is because you had asked about a Section B four and I, we did comment about R1. I, I just want to raise a question. Council, you know, we, we took a position on the hundred percent housing overlay, council took a position on a hundred percent housing overlay. I'm, I will say from a policy standpoint, I'm a little lost to come back with something that has been considered and declined. I would love to see suggestions from staff if we, you know, following your call with HCD about what this all means, I think it would be helpful to see some suggestions for us. I would be resistant, I think in the first instance, to suggestions that have already been considered and declined by council at the very beginning. Yeah.
Yeah. So if I could just also provide some, you know, just a little bit of procedural background for you. So, you know, basically where we are in the process and, you know, as the state housing law, housing element law requires, the city sent the draft element up to HCD for comments. We have received the comments. The city is required to consider those comments. The city has two options essentially with respect to those comments. Either amend the draft housing element based on those comments or respond to HCD with an explanation as to why you are not amending the housing element. Just to kind of give you, and probably should have explained this at the beginning, pardon me, pardon us, but that, so that's kind of the, the city's options with respect to this comment letter.
I'm not suggesting otherwise. I'm saying you have an EG of something that was considered and, and rejected, basically. And I'm not sure it's in anybody's interest to go back to start with solutions that have been considered and rejected. Let's look at some new ideas rather than going back with something that we, you know, we all sort of said and our elected officials said they didn't want to do.
Commissioner Lambert.
I, I could not agree more. I really think that going back to the overlay and probably ending up with the same result will make us look really bad to HCD, so I don't think we should do it. I think Sean is right, we should be looking for other options. For that.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments? Okay, so I'm going to suggest, it is now seven fifty, I'm going to suggest we take a ten-minute break until eight o'clock, and then we come back and proceed. It is now eight o'clock. And we're going to move on to Item nine B. And I would like to sort of set the table for this item before we start. So I, after seeing the HCD letter and after reviewing staff's extensive work on the red lines, I raised a concern to staff over the weekend that I am not ready to talk about red lines until we have gotten our housing elements really firmed up. And in particular, my concern, and I really appreciate staff's very thorough presentation today, and I think it really gave me some comfort that there's not as much work on the housing element as maybe I thought there was. But I still think that there is work can be done, and I think that the red lines that we have received need quite a bit of work and may change after we get an updated housing element. So for those of you who don't have the context of why we got a supplemental staff report, so what happened then was that I talked to staff and we talked about, you know, are there certain elements that we can go through tonight and potentially adopt tonight, or provide a recommendation to the council to adopt? Because there is definitely a concern, which I think is a good one, a couple, couple concerns. One is really providing certainty to people in the community, whether they be developers or non-developers, as to how the housing element is going to be implemented. Another is that there's a lot of expediency to trying to get the red lines done at the same time as the housing element. And again, staff has worked really hard on that, which I appreciate. So I would like to hear from commissioners. So as of this moment, right now, I actually, even after reviewing the supplemental staff report, reviewing the red lines, and reviewing the comments that we've gotten on the red lines, I'm actually not really ready to adopt much of anything tonight, recommend. Though I could be convinced, and so my, what I am going to propose is that we provide some direction to staff on particular issues in the red line that we want to see changed, and then come back to it at a later date, and hopefully that's going to be in October. Maybe it'll be sooner, but I think there's a lot of work to do. So I'd like to hear from the other commissioners. And start with Commissioner Lambert, and then go to Commissioner Landres, and then the rest.
I completely agree with you. I think that it's really premature to be doing substantial rezoning without an adopted housing element, because we don't really know what we're doing. There are some things I think we have to act on tonight. One is the extension of the IZO for administrative approvals for housing projects. I think we probably should talk about the density bonus program. And there are probably other, other issues that other commissioners have as well. But I really think that rezoning from the standpoint of FAR and height and what have you, citywide, is just not, is way premature, because we don't have a housing element. So that's my thought.
Michelle Landres?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say I'm not prepared to vote on anything tonight. I mean, I'm prepared to take straw polls on a small handful of things, but the problem is that when I look at the handful of things that I'm prepared to take a small, take a straw poll on, what it makes me think is that there is a great deal more consultation that needs to be done here, particularly in light of HCD's comments. I would, for example, like to see, so there's, you know, the, I'll give an example of where my, where my concern comes in. So the menu of incentives and concessions with respect to the state density bonus is three, I mean, it's very short, right? It's not long enough. It's not what, it does not reflect the direction that we gave. However, I'm not an expert on what incentives and concessions need to be added to the list. But there's a whole housing production task force that was convened earlier in the year that is expert on that. And so my issue is that I would much prefer to see these red lines, which are tied to our housing element, go back to our housing production task force, be revised in accord, by staff, in accordance with their recommendations, and be brought back to us in a much more mature form than what's before us, and in a form that is much more consistent with the changes that we're going to have to make as a result, as a result of HCD's letter. Otherwise, I think we're going to get into this constant amendment process, and it's going to provide actually less transparency and less certainty to our community. We should do this, we should go slow to go fast, and do this once properly.
Yeah, and Commissioner Fresco, just give me one second. I just also want to tell the public, in case of a question about when those amendments have to be done. So the element itself has to be to HCD by October 15th, TBD about the grace period, but then we have three years to adopt all the red lines and the other things. Commissioner Fresco?
Our original agenda item was that we were going to comment on these and fine tune them, adjust them to our understandings of things, and to the direction we gave previously. So let's just do it. Let's not have a big discussion about whether we're going to discuss it or not. Let's go.
Well, Commissioner Fresco, I don't think everybody is ready to have that discussion. I think that's what I am hearing people say.
Will you ever talk about it at all?
Well, I'd like this, I'd like to poll the commission, so it sounds like you clearly want to talk about it tonight, and give some insight. And if I misstated that, please tell me. Commissioner, Vice Chair Reeves, Heidi, can you hold on a minute?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would benefit by having a little more, well, Heidi chimes in, I want to let her speak.
Yeah, I just, as a, I believe you have some registered callers, and since this item wasn't formally polled at the beginning of your meeting, you know, those, those people will need to speak at some point.
Thank you, Heidi. So I propose to let everyone speak on this topic, and then let's hear public comment, and then let's, I had to proceed. Commissioner Reeves?
Just to finish my thought, is, is I would certainly benefit from more time to digest this, read it a couple of times. We've only had it a few day, we only had it, you know, a few days, and these are major, there's a big change, these are, we're changing the zoning code. So to the extent we have the time, and how you just laid it out, which is, we, our focus is really the housing element by the 15th, and that alone is a significant challenge. If we stay here all night tonight, we could, we might add some things, but then again, staff could actually get some sleep and be prepared for a big workday for the next three straight weeks. But anyways, I could go either way, but I would, I would be happy if we able this discussion a little bit. It would give me more time.
Commissioner Raskin?
I agree.
I have a question. Oh, sorry.
I agree with everything that's been said here. I think we should definitely hear the public, and then I think it is premature, because again, the housing element is still so fluffy, we can't build anything solid on it until we have this kind of basically nailed down. And then we have a good way of looking at and seeing which things actually have to be changed to link up with the housing element. Right now, the housing element's doing this, and it needs to settle down.
Commissioner Lambert?
I just have a quick question. Is there some urgency for doing the IZO actions? To extend the IZOs for the administrative approvals?
This body, right, this body doesn't need to take any action to extend the IZO, so to the extent that's not completed by the, the expiration date, which is the end of this year, council could, could itself extend.
Okay, thank you. Okay, cool.
All right, for the eating. Okay, so let's hear public comment.
Our first caller of the night is Ken Kutcher. Hello, Ken, you are now live in the meeting, and you have three minutes for comment. So Ken Kutcher, are you with us? Okay, I will go to the next caller and circle back to Ken.
It shows that he's an attendee, so it...
He's in our caller queue as well. I unmuted him. He called in pretty early, so it's possible he stepped away. So our next caller in the queue is Sue Steinberg. Hello, Sue, are you with us?
Good evening. My name is Sue Steinberg from Howard Robinson and Associates. I submitted a letter to the file to be included in tonight's documents, but as you may not have had a chance to read it, I'll provide just a brief synopsis. I understand that council has directed staff to review the removal of the density cap for surface parking lots in multi-unit zones that are associated with a boulevard facing commercial use. If the city wants to encourage more housing production, I would suggest expanding that review to surface parking serving all uses, residential, industrial, not just commercial. As you all probably know, the code places arbitrary caps on density in the multi-unit districts. Currently, the R2 zone limits the density to one unit per 2,000 square feet, or four units per parcel, whichever is less. R3 and R4 are similarly limited. These caps should be removed. We represent the ownership of the Pico Manay, an existing apartment complex at 2501 Pico Boulevard. It has, it is on a dual zone through lot. One half of the property is zoned mixed-use boulevard low, and the other half is R2. There's an existing 174-unit apartment complex on the mixed-use boulevard low portion, and the associated surface parking is located on the R2 portion. The R2 lots total about 53,000 square feet, and right now consist only of a surface parking lot. Due to these arbitrary density caps, the four-unit maximum cap on the R2 lot would limit redevelopment to only eight units on two lots that total more than an acre in size. Under this condition, the property would never be redeveloped, and would remain an acre of land dedicated to housing cars, not people. With this one example, you can see this cap completely negates the viability of large lots in these zones to provide housing at levels to meet the city's needs. The four-unit cap in the R2 zone is particularly onerous, because it essentially prohibits density bonus projects, in that zones, since a base of five units is required to trigger a density bonus. No parcel that is large enough to achieve five units at a rate of one per 2,000, thus its 10,000 square foot lot, should be restricted from the option to provide affordable housing in exchange for the incentives of the density bonus. I understand there may be concerns that those multifamily zones are where the majority of rent-controlled apartments are located, and according to staff, the density caps encourage housing stability in those neighborhoods. However, there are other local and state regulations that closely focuses on maintaining the existing housing stock. Further, removal of the caps would not have any negative impact on adjacent neighbors, as a development standard, setbacks and setbacks would remain in place. In the case of 2501 Pico, the existing apartment buildings have had a $20 million upgrade, and the ownership would be willing to build subterranean parking on the R2 lots to maintain the existing parking while adding new units. They are certainly not interested in removing units, and I'm sure other property owners who are in the business of supplying rental housing would be more inclined to add housing than to remove it. I would urge the commission to consider removing the arbitrary density caps in the multi-unit district. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Commissioner Raskin has a question, so you don't go away.
I think she just left. Are you still there? I think we, that's all right.
She dropped out of the queue.
Okay. Our next caller is Jackson McNeil. Hello, Jackson, you're now live in the meeting, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for taking my call. I realize that some of my comments may be a little bit premature, given your decision not necessarily to move forward with specific comments on red lines tonight. Nevertheless, I do want to briefly discuss two issues that we've identified as part of our preliminary review of the proposed zoning ordinance changes, and hopefully this will be informative when you do consider those red lines later on. First, ground floor housing in the downtown. Despite the commission's clear direction last month to eliminate the city's current prohibition on ground floor housing, the proposed red line changes, at least as they stand, would continue to prohibit ground floor residential in most of the downtown. Staff's proposed changes would only allow ground floor housing in mid-block parcels in the neighborhood village in transit-adjacent district. The rest of the downtown would only allow residential amenity space, but not units, provided the residential amenity space is more than 50 feet from the front parcel line. This broad prohibition on ground floor units is a clear constraint on housing and a clear missed opportunity. We shouldn't be mandating developers to build even more ground floor commercial space when we've all seen the for lease and for rent signs on the retail and restaurant spaces downtown. So we respectfully ask the commission to recommend removing specific limitations, number one, and number two, for the multiple unit structures use, and allow flexibility for ground, for ground floor housing in the downtown. If for whatever reason that's impalatable, I'm happy to discuss a more nuanced approach. Second, increased impact fees. As written, the proposed, the proposed changes would add a new section to the zoning ordinance, setting forth additional requirements for housing projects. This new section would require all housing projects to provide community benefits that currently only apply to Tier 2 projects. Under today's code, Tier 2 projects are subject to a 14% premium on three impact fees, but the 14% premium only applies to the additional flooring area above the Tier 1 base standard. The red line changes, as they stand, however, would apply the 14% premium to the entire project, not just the flooring area above Tier 1. This would result in higher impact fees for housing projects, and would put a new additional burden on housing at a time when HCD has specifically directed the city to reduce constraints on housing rather than adding new ones. Thank you.
Mr. McNeil, are you still there?
I am.
Chair, may I?
Yes, please, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. So I'm curious, I am aware of the problem, and I believe with the mid-block, ground floor residential, the folks whom you represent, if that were, if the word parcel, the idea of a parcel were removed, so that we don't have all the lot consolidation issues and things like that, but there were a restriction on ground floor residential, or, you know, no ground floor residential, say, within 50 feet of a corner, and no ground, and no ground floor residential entry, say, within 25 feet of a corner, so that we have the ability to preserve corner activation, would that, you know, if we weren't able to go all the way to eliminating the restriction, would that work for you? I understand parcel is a really big word, and, and may be just, you know, taking an axe where a scalpel is required.
Right, parcels are maybe really, really big, and you might have situations in which, you know, a parcel extends all the way to the corner, but really, there are parts of the parcel that are actually mid-block. So, you know, if you were not willing to eliminate the prohibition altogether, yes, you know, that would, that would be helpful to have some sort of distance-based limitation. Changing the specific limitation, I think, specific limitation number one, so that you allow ground floor, allow actual units on the ground floor, you know, perhaps a certain distance from the front parcel line is an alternative approach that, you know, might also be effective, whether that's 25 feet or 50 feet.
Okay, and then in the interest of time, not tonight, but would you have, would you or anyone else have an alternative fee calculation suggestion that, you know, rather than, I recognize the issue that you're raising, I don't think we're going to get into the discussion tonight, but, you know, would you be willing to send in some suggestions for transparent calculation methods?
Yeah, I realize the issue, and we don't need to get into a nuanced discussion right now. I mean, the simplest solution for the fees is just to apply the base fee to the entire project, because the fees are based on square footage, so they automatically scale, you know, the larger the project, the larger the fee. Another simple alternative solution is just to only apply 14% premium to the incremental FAR above 1.5 FAR, which is currently sort of the general Tier 1 FAR limit, but we can certainly think about that some more and submit correspondence, and this issue's going to be directly before the commission.
Thank you.
Wasn't that, went those alternatives in Paula's letter?
Yeah. Yes, we did submit a correspondence on this earlier today.
Anyone else for, let's move on. Thank you, Jackson.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Paula Larmour. Hello, Paula, welcome to the meeting, and you have three minutes for comment.
Hi, Paula Larmour, also with Harding, Larmour, Ketchikan, Cozal. So I'm pivoting a bit to address directly the supplemental staff report, which I just pulled up a couple of minutes ago, because we didn't appreciate that pivot. My understanding is staff feels that these issues need to be prioritized, because they're like a fundamental portion of the assumptions in the housing element. And, look, if all that was being proposed for change was increasing the FAR and height, I don't think... I don't think everyone would be feeling as overwhelmed by this comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance that we've been faced with. I mean, I think the overall arching concern is that there's no clear purpose in all the changes to the red lines, and that's what I would ask the commission to give some clear direction to staff there, that if we need to do changes that we feel are critical, have an overall guiding purpose, be that every red line change needs to serve to increase or incentivize housing production. If you look at the red lines, it's just a ton of other standards attempting to regulate at various other issues, and not, many of which actually disincentivize housing or place further burdens on housing production. So, looking at the supplemental staff report, yes, FAR in height increases. If you guys could do a focus session on those and make sure there's the appropriate relationship and not the same height limit for two different districts where there's a .5 FAR differential, and you would only focus on making those increases, I think that would be a great focus session. And if that could be brought forward in red line, that would be wholly supported. It's just all the additional crap, sorry, but stuff that goes to maximum building footprint and other items that aren't done with the purpose of increasing or incentivizing housing production. A similar comment about the density bonus implementation, like, we took an ordinance that only applied to our R2, 3, and 4 districts and was based on those particular standards and just tried to make a few tweaks and apply it to the rest of the city. I don't think it works. We have a tremendous amount of other standards that need to be addressed in the rest of the city. We've also changed our AHVP, Affordable Housing Production Program, to temper, to lessen the ability to achieve the density bonus. Today, I can do 10% very low income and achieve something like a 32% bonus under a new structure. I have to do 5% only very low, and the other two have to be higher, so I get a lesser density bonus. Again, like, this is the exact opposite of what I think we're trying to achieve. And so, I think if you guys could attack these density bonus implementation in AHVP, it would be great, but it needs to be really focused on trying to incentivize housing production and plan.
That has been three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
And our last caller is back to Ken Ketcher. Hello, Ken. You are in the meeting, and you have three minutes.
Hi, thanks, Melissa. I'm sorry to miss the earlier introduction.
No worries.
And thank you, commissioners, for the chance to speak on the housing element and the importance of achieving at this point a fully compliant element. As reflected in several of the comments and questions from commissioners tonight, I would urge the city to take HCD's comments very seriously. It's currently drafted, the housing element, as by my count, about 44 programs that are lumped into seven goals, and it sounds like some more are to be added based on staff's remarks tonight. My concern is the lack of specificity, as I've heard the chair speak of with respect to a number of the key programs related to housing production. And I think that needs to be addressed in the element and correspondingly in the zoning ordinance and the land use element. It seems to me that the state is not going to embrace vague policies, given their comments, without clear action steps about how the city will incentivize new housing production over commercial development and/or over the status quo of existing uses in the non-residential zones. That's where the city should focus its attention, and frankly, achieving just bare financial feasibility without incentives for housing is not going to get the city to the production numbers that are needed at this point. To echo Paula's comments, the red lines that have been distributed thus far while raising FARs and heights for mixed-use housing projects at the same time take away by disincentivizing and imposing more governmental constraints. And I do think that if more governmental constraints are going to be imposed, those would need to be evaluated as well in the housing element. And I think that's a very important feature for the city to keep in mind. One specific comment with respect to heights and densities, in case you get into that, are comparing the MUB and the MUBL. But the MUB has a higher FAR, as Paula mentioned, and yet the heights are proposed to be the same at 55 feet. And it seems to me that in that vein, the MUB should be considered for a height limit of 65 rather than 55 feet. That's where we want to encourage our more intense mixed-use development. We've submitted extensive comments and certainly hope that at some point.
Thank you. That has been three minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Melissa, is that it?
That's the complete caller queue, yes.
Thank you so much. So, I do think it's significant that we haven't, I mean, we basically heard from one law firm, right? Did I get that right? Was there anybody else that I missed there? And I appreciate very much, Sue, sorry, two law firms. I very much appreciate their comments. You know, I am a little troubled. We haven't heard from other members of the public. And I think it sort of speaks the, it's even more reason for me to like, when I have a pause here and make sure that we have meaningful community input. So, what I am going to propose for your consideration is that we basically do a round of people providing comments and feedback that they want staff to particularly take. I then think it's incumbent on us to then spend more time with these red lines and provide additional feedback. I personally actually really like Sean's idea about taking it to the production committee, so I'd like to take a straw poll on that as well, whether or not this group thinks that that is productive. And if so, when? Is it this draft or is it the next draft? So, who wants to start? Commissioner Landris, then Commissioner Lambert, then Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Okay, I'm going to really limit my comments because I'm really uncomfortable with, with detailed discussion where I feel the experts haven't, you know, the full community of experts hasn't fully weighed in. But I want to ask a couple of, I have some questions for staff that may, you know, get at where we're going. And one of the thing that I'm a little bit confused about is the, we have these red lines for the LOSE, right? We have red lines for the DCP. We have, right, so we have the red lines for the, for the general plan, for some specific plans, and then for the ZO. And what I'm, what I'm missing is an understanding of where the numbers are in the LOSE. I don't want to talk about the numbers tonight because I think we're not done with the housing element, as, you know, Mario put it really well. But I'm just curious, what's the theory here? Are we trying to take numbers out of the LOSE and dump them to the ZO? And is that, can we do that? That's, that's, I mean, like, I'm at big, I'm at big questions. I'm also really not, I'll say the other thing, two other things. One is, I'm noticing that there was a lot of cutting and pasting. So, for example, we brought some really aggressive pedestrian activation to the IC districts, and, you know, courtyard commercial may be a better model than pedestrian-oriented commercial. You know, there's a coffee place on Broadway, I want to say, that is much more pleasant because you're inside the courtyard than would be on the street. So, a second high-level question is, can we make this a little bit less cookie cutter? And then the third question is, we have a lot of conversation about ARB, but are we, you know, some of the projects go to landmarks, and I'm just curious about, you know, where they fit. So, those are my three questions. They're high-level. I don't want to talk about, I'd really rather hear from staff about them and talk about them another time.
Yeah, let's hear from staff.
So, in terms of the red lines, we have attempted to, the red lines that you see across LOSE and DCP, the Vermont Plan, particularly with LOSE and the zoning ordinance, they are written to be with each other. You know, obviously, whatever you do in the zoning ordinance has to be consistent with the land use and circulation element. I emphasize again, these are preliminary draft red lines. Couldn't normally roll out the red lines in this eight, given the timeframe that we have. So, I appreciate where the commission's minds are at with respect to this. You know, but we felt that it would be helpful for your discussion to understand not just the policy and the program and the housing element, but how those things happen in a zoning ordinance, right? We write code. This is what we do. It's what we work with every day, you know. And what's put forth, if it's helpful for your discussion, as we suggested in the supplemental report, as I heard in the public comments tonight and some of the commission's discussion, you know, it sounds like there's a desire to try and dot every i and cross every t, you know, before we want to bring back the red lines. I think what we were trying to suggest was, you know, maybe there's a priority list. I would like to understand further from the commission with respect to hearing comments about the FARs. It was our understanding that that has been discussed for months at this point. We worked with the working group to prepare economic analyses to come to those FARs. You know, this is not the first time we've ever talked about these FARs and what's supportable and the affordable housing that goes with it. There's a direct relationship there. And I will say, our goal, you just provide me just a minute, you know, just to, our goal in bringing these forward was to really certainty for housing providers upon adoption of the housing element. We did not want to have a gap of a housing element adopted and people being like, what are my standards? You know, something in the housing element, the zoning code not lining up. And, you know, if there's a desire to have every single issue visited and rewritten in the zoning code, you know, we will not be back in November. No way with that. You know, so I would try and, you know, implore the commission to at least, we're not looking for adoption, a recommendation. That's not what tonight is about. This is a sort of progress check on, you know, these are some ideas on how you might accomplish what is in the housing element. The FARs that are in there are, you know, we believe there was alignment between the development community, between planning commission, what council endorsed in June and told us to move forward with. And none of HCD's comments are going to affect, you know, what's in those FARs. So, you know, I think we would probably like to understand a little bit of specificity as to, you know, are you looking for more FAR, even more than that? You know, these are not FARs that are marginally feasible. In the, in the economic analysis, they were, they were more than feasible. You know, so I think we would just want to have an understanding as to, you know, if you have different ideas on other numbers, it would be helpful for us to know what that is so that we can kind of take that back and analyze it, you know, and try and figure out, you know, how we, how we come back to with something like that. But, you know, the red lines you see across the LOSE, the BAP, like, they are, we attempted to bring it all together so you kind of see holistically, you know, how it works. I think from a general principle, it was kind of like, what's happening citywide, including the Vermont Plan, is different than what's happening in downtown. In downtown generally, based on what we're seeing, you know, we have to retain the tier system because we can't downzone because of SB 330. So, you can't just lower the FARs to make things look nice, you know, or to have variation. It just is, in terms of the FAR, it has to, you know, be at the level that it is. So, but again, you know, we're really here tonight to just kind of hear your reactions to that, any sort of thoughts that you have. All of that is helpful. You know, tonight was not intended to adopt red lines, so I don't want that to be a misunderstanding at all. It was just to put information out there, you know, where it is in progress at the moment, and to hear the commission's, you know, responses to that. And again, you know, in the supplemental report, we suggested that if there's discomfort about a variety of other things that can, you know, are in process and what have you, you know, we would suggest, you know, if it's heightened FAR around density bonus, AHPP, you know, very, very limited things, that would be helpful. But if you don't want to, that's up to you as well, so.
Commissioner, hold on, Commissioner Lambert, just, please hold. Commissioner Landris, do you have anything else for?
Well, I was just sort of hoping for answers to those three questions because I was trying to honor, you know, at the high level, what staff was asking for. And it would help, you know, it would help me do better work as a commissioner. So, so again, I was, I was trying to understand the relationship in your, your framing of the LOSE, that the LOSE revisions were not going to have numbers. There's a sort of, there are numbers for non-housing projects, but everywhere it says housing projects, it just says "more", which is great, but I, you know, what does that mean? And then, as I, as I indicated, what, you know, what's the situation with the, you know, can we avoid the cookie cutting? And kind of have some creativity and a little bit more, more variation in different neighborhoods and different districts, excuse me, and then where does landmarks fit into all of this? Those are my three questions.
Well, so, Sean, can I suggest that actually your second question is not a question, that is direction. You are saying you don't want cookie cutter?
Right, fair enough. Great, yes.
Can I say something?
Well, can Jing answer my questions, or do we want to answer them later?
I thought you did.
Well, I didn't understand the relation, I don't understand why I'm not, there's numbers on non-housing projects in the LOSE, in the LOSE red line, then there are no numbers on housing. Maybe I'm reading the wrong thing, but I'm curious, I don't understand where we find the housing numbers in the LOSE.
That should, there should be numbers in there. That's fully intentional. It should match the zoning ordinance, so.
Oh, okay. And then where is landmarks? Is that, I mean, we saw the conversation about ARB, but what's the role of landmarks in, in the process? Many projects, we talked about objective standards. Many projects don't just go to ARB, they also go to landmark, so.
Well, I wouldn't say many. You know, we only have 140 landmarks in the entire city.
A few are.
23,000 parcels, though, you know, not exactly the majority of the city. If something, if a project involves a historic resource, it goes through a different process than just normal design. It goes to the landmarks commission, receives a specific requirement. You know, that's a, that's a very normal process. Even in all of the housing legislation that has gone through, there is nearly always, you know, a recognition and exception for section of historic resources. So, there's not a proposal to dismantle that in any way, shape, or form.
And are we still doing, are we doing concurrent tolling of the 75-day demo, demo review with?
Yeah, so for that, for, for projects that are 100% affordable housing, this is already in the code. This is not brand-new. That timeline can, can run together, but I think as we explained previously, the reason for doing that, it's really for, that 75-day waiting period is an opportunity for public review of the demolition application and to file potentially a landmark designation application. Once that waiting period is over, then that creates the safe harbor, so to speak, for that application to move forward without the risk of a designation happening at some point anywhere in the process, which is what it was before, and it's why.
And why wouldn't, right, and why wouldn't that, why wouldn't that be extended to non-affordable housing at this point or some version of that?
Because affordable housing has funding constraints often, you know, that, that kind of, I mean, I would say in general, our affordable housing providers just simply avoid those things is what we've seen. But we have actually one project where they integrated, you know, that project into it and that. But we, we have actually one project where they integrated, you know, that project into it and that concurrent of timeframe is something that's in there. For, for market rate housing, that was a policy, you know, choice that, that was made, given that that's a lot of projects that go through. And again, the intent is to provide certainty for the community and the applicant, you know, to not have that. I, I think there, there's more risk in having that period run concurrent as opposed to just knowing what it is and then, you know, having it be clear and everybody knows from the day you submitted, you don't have this like, you know, potential designation application being filed on the 74th day when, you know, we're three months into review or two months into review of a project. That, that's not good process for anybody.
Yeah, and I think we've talked about this a lot of times. So let's, let's move on to Commissioner Lambert.
Can I, can I?
Yeah, let's think.
Okay, I don't have any questions, I just have priorities and statements. I have and continue to have issues with the density bonus layout in the red line. I don't know why we have such a limited menu of options of concessions. I do not understand that. I don't understand why we can't, for example, use LA TOC program and their density program and their menus for us. I mean, I just don't get it. I also am confused, and I don't want to hear an answer, I'm confused about the relationship between the AHPP and the density bonus. They seem to be not working together. And the way I'm looking at it is that if you use AHPP, which is required, and you want a density bonus, that's on top of the AHPP units and that just doesn't work. So I think we need to think about one or the other option for developers. And I also, I'm very concerned about the impact of additional fees on housing. I think what Ken Cutcher and Paula have offered in terms of the increment between tier one and tier two, increase the impact fees for that increment, but not the whole project, because we are going the opposite direction of what HCD told us to do. We are, we are imposing more fees on housing projects and that's not okay. And in terms of FAR, I don't have any problem with the FARs being proposed because I don't really know if they're right or wrong. Because until we have a housing element, we don't really know. My problem is just that the height attached to those FARs, I have no idea where those heights came from and I don't really want to hear about it tonight because I think we can talk about it later. We have suggested over and over again that we talk to architects locally about what works from a height standpoint and an FAR standpoint. They have to work together because otherwise FAR doesn't really mean anything. So those are my priorities and I would hope that we can talk about them another time.
Thank you. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi, I believe you are next, and then Commissioner Fresco.
I have a very simple request. You know, these are very complex issues and it's hard for people to wrap their heads around all the moving parts and how they interact. But I found that map that came out with the ordinance we talked about earlier this evening, proposed ordinance, was very helpful to understand what the half-mile radius looks like and how it affects different properties and all that. So at some point in the red line process, it would be good to have a zoning map, just like our traditional zoning map is. And on one side of it, you would have all the different zones, you know, R1, R2, NUOB, blah, blah, blah. And right there next to it, you would have the zone that the FAR say that's there and the FAR that's proposed. Because people are very concerned about their immediate neighborhood. They're very concerned about what's going to happen next door. And so they would be able to look very closely at this map and see, okay, I'm next to this event here, this A lot, and this is what's happening on the A lot. Yeah, I'm saying, those, if you could reduce it to a proposed map, everyone could see it and be very clear. And then people could come in and respond to that. But it's very hard to look at a zoning code and come through all the pages and try to figure out, well, where am I and where's this? Oh wait, this is in the Bergmont Plan, you know, it's very complex. But a single graphic interface would be very helpful in presenting to the public.
Thank you, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi. Commissioner Fresco?
I, I guess I spent a little more time on this than some of my fellow commissioners because I do feel, I did notice some really specific things. And so I'll just throw out some of my thoughts. We had talked a lot when we looked at the housing element draft about artists live work on the ground floors and ground floor residential in general. And I feel like in the LOUSE red lines that were presented, qualified, that it had to be pedestrian oriented, that there might have to be a stoop or some kind of treatment. But I don't see any problem with having, having an apartment building with a door, an entrance that's well-designed in any way, being next to an existing ground floor, commercial retail space on any part of any street. There's just no reason to have any qualifications to that in any way. I think, you know, in urban walkable cities, you can walk out your front door and walk into a restaurant or bodega and that is acceptable and even desirable. So I just would hope that we can look more at that. I'll keep away from some of the more subtly technical things.
Commissioner Fresco, I might suggest if you have specific suggestions, it sounds like staff wants to hear them, so let's get them out on the table.
Okay, never mind then.
I mean, usually I say brevity, but I, you know, staff is asking for specifics, so.
Well, I mean, I don't have that huge. It jumped out at me that the off-site affordable requirement for tier three jumps from 30% to 40%. And that just seemed a little prohibitive and we do want people to build these units. And, I mean, that's a lot of land they have. I mean, I guess it's a whole parcel and a whole other building, but it just seemed like a lot. And, you know, I would like to hear maybe more about why staff thought that was feasible either today or next time or whatever. I had brought up last time, didn't get a ton of traction, but didn't get the round nose that some of my other ideas get from this commission about the idea of allowing a little more FAR within the height by a modification of open space, of shared open space requirement, especially now that we can have these big open spaces on roofs. You know, Tar Beach will soon be part of Silicon Beach, Silicon Beach, and I'm excited about that, Silicon Beach. But I wonder if maybe some developers, this is just a complete random idea, maybe you can think about it or look at it. Some people might be willing to pay a one-time in LOOSE fee for a small percentage, maybe 10% of their required open space in order to be able to build a few more units with that FAR, you know, turn that back into FAR. And maybe we'll get a few more, a little more bang for our buck. And, and at the same time, get money in a fund and maybe the city can start building some pocket parks for some of these neighborhoods, which is what they really need. You know, when you live in a, an urban place, you don't really want to go to a covered indoor cement place when you want to get outside. You want to walk out your door and go to an outdoor space, maybe even with plants. And I think we can get more people on our streets and get more activation and newly, differently about that in a really big way. I just was wondering on page 151 of the PDF of the red line, three-bedroom units have to be 1,800 square feet and four-bedroom units have to be 1,200 square feet. That seems like probably a typo, but just in case. I don't, well. Well, this is more about ground floor, oh, the stoops again, I wrote it twice. So I did note also that neighborhood commercial for Main Street has the craziest, highest height of 65 feet and neighborhood commercial on Montana Avenue only has 45 feet. And that seems inside out at best. Neighborhood commercials should be lower than mixed boulevard glow. If by this designation, you were thinking of the parking lots on Yelson Way, which I would also don't think should be 65 feet, but if that's what you meant when you said this, I would suggest clarifying that because Main Street is a really, really important historic street with a lot of really significant character and this could be disastrous. So we have to be really careful with that. And those are some of my, my personal notes. I have to say, I did speak on the phone with Paula and Ken and sorry, blank, drawing a blank, my coning, thank you, this morning. And most of the things that they pointed out, some of them were things I had already noted, some of them made a lot of sense. And so I would just suggest to staff to also look again at their letters and make sure that the way staff is implementing our recommendations from before is really working out the way we intended. I just have to say that I think staff is doing a phenomenal job and I am just lost in admiration for the amount of work you guys churn out and the detail and the quality and the knowledge that you bring to this work. And I feel dumb, silly to be nitpicking it this way, but we all want everything to be as good as it can be and thank you.
Sorry, did you just say my name or were you?
I did say your name, Commissioner Raskin.
Sorry, my phone went silent for a second. First, it's a quick question about process. So as we discussed earlier, the Housing Element Law contemplates that we'll be making changes to zoning and development standards up to three years after the adoption of, of the, the housing elements. But I'm, I'm wondering, and this thought occurred to me as we're talking about this, if there's a risk of lateral inconsistency between LOUSE and the housing elements after we adopt the housing elements? And if there's a need to perhaps address some things in LOUSE more immediately? I'm just throwing that out there as a general question, but I would like to spend more time on this if possible.
So I just want to respond to that from my standpoint and that is that my thought actually is really that we should have more detail in the housing element that guides us and serves as the, you know, constitution, right? For our other changes. And so the extent that we are talking about FAR in height, that we should be specific in the housing element. And to the extent that we are talking about things for the density bonus and updating our density bonus program, let's put that in the housing element because it also really directly responds to HCD's comments of like, you guys, you need more specificity, right? So that's my thought about it. Does that sort of make sense to you? Do you think that is a way that we can proceed?
Yeah, that, that does make sense. I'm glad, glad you said that. It, I think, yeah, it's a good way to proceed. It was just a conceptual thought that came into my mind as we were talking about it and wanted to.
A good one.
One, one thing I'll say is that if, if we're going to have further discussions too with the Housing Production Group, I think we should also talk to the Housing Preservation Group because these changes do implicate potential impacts to displacements and our neighborhoods. And you know, to that point, a lot of what's, what's being put into the red lines involves large-scale upzoning of the Pico neighborhood. And, you know, as anyone who's participated in the process of the, you know, the Pico neighborhood planning over the last few years knows that, that there's some real concerns about that. And so, you know, we have some carve-outs in certain places for the Pico neighborhood. For example, in the, the updates for the development review permit process, actually, I think that was already there. But the, the point being, I think we should think carefully about, about maybe putting some carve-outs for the Pico neighborhood and other neighborhoods that might really be at risk of displacement and maybe, you know, thinking very surgically about how we're doing this. Yes, as Commissioner Fresco said with Main Street, that's another example. You know, I have a few other, you know, very specific points. I mean, Commissioner Fresco, I, I hear you, I went through this in pretty fine detail. I'll just, I'll just say a few things that, you know, we might want to consider as a group. One of which is, is in the affordable housing requirements for projects in downtown, I, I think we should also look at the fractional rounding issues that have come up a few times over the last few years. I, you know, for example, you know, adding up units and then making them all, you know, to the least possible standards. And then also for that point, also, you know, the way in which we round in general throughout, throughout the plan or throughout the zoning code. I saw that, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but tier-two qualifying benefits are now only applicable in residential zones, this is section 9.23.030, I think. You know, we should look at that. And, you know, I know this was direction from council, but the 50% affordability requirement for the parking lot developments for religious institutions is a really bonerous standard. And I'm, I'm curious if the development incentives that we're giving to those projects are enough to really make them feasible. You know, I know we're, we're adding in some, some, some height and, you know, some other things, but it's going to be, I think, with the 50% affordability requirement, it's going to be really, really hard to see those products get, get funding unless we, we really add in some really great incentives. You know, for the air quality assessment zone, I, I love it. I actually live in the zone. I'm curious why we're only looking at diesel particulate matter. I think, you know, if we're going to take that seriously, we should maybe look at some other, you know, constituent. And, yeah, yeah, I echo the comments about, you know, the menu of concessions and incentives for density bonuses, I think that we need to, to look at that again. And you know, just as, as general comments, you know, I do have some concerns about the, the numbers specific to our affordable housing requirements. I think, you know, we're going to keep going down a slippery slope of chiseling away at these each time we go through this revision and I have some real concerns about that. And, and, you know, for that matter, making all projects, housing projects eligible, eligible for AA, you know, we need to be very careful about applying that universally. I think we need carve-outs for areas that are at risk of displacement like the Pico neighborhood. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I think we should also be very careful about, you know, the types of, you know, modifications and waivers that are included as part of that as well and maybe create some, some carve-outs for things that do require some more community input. Yeah, I'll email some more, more comments to staff later, but that, those are my, those are my thoughts for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Raskin. Commissioner Reed, do you want to go? Do you want me to go?
I'll, I'll just go really quickly because a lot of the things, the preliminary stuff that I want to talk about is. And, and also I want to say, by saying, you know, staff, I'm looking for more time to review this, not because I think that you've done a poor job and I need to work on it more. I'm getting this just because of my workload, I need to spend more time and give this the detail that it, it needs. So that's really where my, where I'm kind of happy to support this can, if we want to say a continuance. But anyways, with that said, you know, other items were touched on, I agree with. One that hasn't really come up, I was looking at the ARB streamlining. And it's interesting to me, one of the aspects we're doing to streamline is to add more projects that get reviewed. So things that are less than 7,500 square feet seems completely counterproductive to me. So things that are less than seventy-five hundred square feet seems completely counterproductive to me. And I would like us not to do that. There's also a, and I want to take a step back and say, I think the ARB does a great job. I look at the buildings that are being built around the city, whether it's the ones at Lincoln and Broadway or the new Fifth and Broadway project or Fifth and, I'm sorry, Lincoln and Colorado and Fifth and Broadway. Those are very nice projects. We should be happy to have those in our community. Um, so I think they're, they do a good job and I want them to be part of this process. But giving, you know, smaller projects going through there, I don't see the value of that. Also, I wonder if, when they, if they issue a denial, does that really need the applicant to appeal that? Or is that just, or should that just be, their comments be passed on to us as part of our review of the project? Um, I think that would be a more streamlined, that would streamline the costs of the project, that's for sure. And the time for staff to respond to any appeal, you know, any, any of the appeal documents. Um, with that, I'm going to be quiet and just be ready for the next, the next meeting.
All right. So um, thank you, Vice Chair Reese. So a lot of the things have already been addressed. I will try not to repeat. I will say that I had a very long conversation and a very helpful conversation today with Hank Coning and Paula Laramore and Ken Ketcher. And um, it really highlights the need to take these red lines to both the Production Committee and Ellis. I think it's a great idea to also take them to the Preservation Committee. Um, so if staff is looking for some particular direction, from my standpoint, basically everything in Ms. Laramore's letter is spot on. Nina talked about the ground for housing. I mean, I, I, I don't think there should be any constraints. We should allow ground for housing. Uh, Sue Steinberg mentioned the unit cap issue, and I would like us to take a look at that. I understand that there is a um, sort of a tension between the unit cap and the reason that it was placed with preventative placement. But it's just way too low. And it is a one-size-fits-all, no matter what size of site you have, which I think is super problematic. Um, I'm very concerned about the addition of any new fees to housing. We should, it's actually the total opposite of what HCD is asking us to do, which is to incentivize housing. And our fees are already some of the highest um, in the area. And so to add any more fees to housing makes it infeasible. Similarly, increasing affordability levels to forty percent in other places is really, I think, also contrary to what we're trying to do. I don't understand where it came from. So we need to take a hard look at that. On the density bonus, people have already spoken about the menu of incentives, which is very disappointing. It needs to be much, much larger. And similarly, I have said this before and I'll say it again, that I'm really opposed to a density bonus requiring the three different, um, a percentage of each income category. I think that that is, um, I mean, and in fact, staff said as much as the City Council, but the purpose of that is to basically temper the effect of the density bonus ordinance. And to me, that is obviating and circumventing the density bonus ordinance. And what it does in particular is that it, it's going to limit the number of incentives that any project can get unless it provides um, significantly more affordable housing, which will then make the project infeasible, unfortunately. So if, so I would like us to not have a draft that requires us to um, to divide it by income category. And I know that that's something that happened to council and I would ask council to reconsider that. So I don't think we just have to say, well, that's what council said. It's, it's done. They get to make the final decision. And I would like to ask them to reconsider that issue. And if they don't, or if staff for some reason or the commission thinks that that's not appropriate, then the density bonus um, ordinance needs to then allow for more incentives. So um, so projects can actually take advantage of the incentives and concessions, right? So if you only get one, maybe you can use height, but then you can't use the open space thing that Nina was talking about, or you can't use the setback issue. So we, we can't circumvent the density bonus ordinance. Um, staff has previously asked me about the off-menu issue. Oh my God, that cat. Um, and I would propose that we have a very long list of, of um, incentives and concessions that are on the menu. And then if you ask for something that is off the menu, so let's say you want four stories or let's say you want something like, that we can't even think of, that entire project should have to come to the commission. Not just the incentive, but the entire project. Because, right, we are saying that this universe of things is okay and we have vetted them. And if you want something outside the universe, you have to come to us and ask. And we can always revisit the standards. I'm concerned about the, the narrowing of the definition of a housing development project. I don't exactly understand why we wouldn't just use what's in state law. Um, I'm concerned, and this is in Paula's letter, but there's a reference to an EPA map. I think we should be really careful about that because those maps change, right? And we don't exactly know what they are or how they're used. And can we do something that's more localized for ourselves? Um, as opposed to using that metric. Something that Hank has talked a lot about is the slope issue. And so I'd like us, I'd like staff to look at getting rid of the slope requirement that... What am I talking about? I'm looking forward in here. Uh, but I think it's in the letter.
Open space. Is it open, open space? Open space.
No, it's not tied to the open space.
The two percent is open space.
Well, there's also the eighteen-inch thing.
Yes, thank you, Nina. That's what I'm talking about. Um, let me just scroll through my notes here quickly to see if there's anything else. I, yeah, my overarching comment is great start. This is a great place for us to start discussion. I think we all have a lot of work to do and the community needs to weigh in. Um, and I really want staff to focus on the housing element. And to the extent that there's specificity from here that we put in, let's do it. Um, so the, oh, and the fractions, yeah, we got to look at the fraction. Okay, so that's, those are my comments. Um, I kind of want to ask the mission, what do you, what is your pleasure in terms of how to proceed? Commissioner Landriss.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say one thing that all of, I think all of these comments are getting at. Um, and I recognize that there may be, you know, a range of opinions in our community about how we get this done. But, you know, A, HCD is looking for us to be pro-housing, um, not just to make housing feasible. I think it's very important that we analyze if we're, we're making a request of staff is, you know, to go back to the point that was made, I think Paula Larmour made it well. But I, I, you know, I think it's a policy, um, I think it's a policy issue. We need to analyze every proposed change and ask if it makes us a pro-housing community. And by pro-housing, I don't just mean housing production. I also mean housing protection. Are we in favor of the people who live here getting to continue to live here, right? So that they're protected from displacement? Are we in favor of more housing being built? And the other thing that I think we need to be very clear about, and it's, it's something where, you know, is that we mean what we say and we say what we mean. We don't put, we don't give with one hand and then take away with policies and procedures on the other. I think let's have the arguments over what heights and FARs should be. Let's have those arguments. But once we've come up with the envelope, once we've come up with what we think our city needs to, you know, allow in order to get to its next iteration, as it were, then let's make sure that we're not playing a bait and switch. Let's make sure that happens. I would be, I think we'd be a much more honest city with um, with being able, with have people having insurances that they could actually build what we say they can build. Even if maybe those are slightly, you know, if those are slightly lower heights than they would be otherwise, I don't think they can be under the current circumstances. But I don't want to promise the world and, you know, give a, give, give a grain of sand. And I think a lot of what we've done over the last number of years has been to do that. And I think we just, we have to completely change our culture of what we're doing here. Um, and uh, yeah, so I just wanted to add that.
Good.
I'm going to suggest that for your consideration, that we ask staff to update the red line, you know, sort of like time permitting, after it focuses on the housing element. Then take those red lines to, and maybe we even make them public, right? So we make them public so we can all look at them and the community can look at them. And we take them back to the two committees and then we come back. So that's my suggestion.
What a doll. Not you as a cat.
I mean, me too, but you know.
I'm sorry, it's, it's, she's brand, Jim, you're up next, I think. Um, but yeah, it's a little out of control here.
Uh, so how does that sound to other commissioners? Does anyone object to that? Does anyone? Okay.
Do you want to take a motion? Do you want to make that into a motion? And we fold in the request that the, that the staff reconvene the Housing Production and Housing Preservation Task Forces and en route to doing what you've just asked?
Uh, that's appropriate, given our agenda, sure. Yeah, you can make the motion.
Can we make that motion? Or let me, let me try this. It, I will move that by incorporation of a, that we incorporate the chair's previous comments in terms of that we continue the item uh, to future date, that we continue each of the red lines to a future date, subject to revision by staff pursuant to the remarks just made by the chair. And that we request that the city reconvene the Housing Production and Housing Preservation Task Forces.
I'll second that. Commissioner Raskin?
Throwing out there for our considerations, perhaps a friendly amendment, whether it makes sense to also involve the Housing Commission in this and the Rent Board to the extent it's within their jurisdiction.
Agreed. Friendly to me. I, I, I thought about it earlier. I, yes, the Rent Board needs to see all of this for sure, and the Housing Commission as well.
Yeah, and I guess I would also add, I can't remember who said that it felt like a lot of the amendments were focused on production, right? But to the extent that the um, protection or Rent Board has other suggestions, that would be also.
They're represented on the task forces, but I think, I think it needs, given that they're, give, I, here, what, what I would say is to the extent that there are new programs being proposed by staff in the housing element that relate to housing preservation and anti-displacement, those preservation programs need to be reviewed by both the Housing Commission and the Rent Board. I mean, I know it's adding, I'm, I, but it will, it will contribute to our high-quality consultation.
What's that? What is the Housing Commission's schedule these days? Are they meeting?
Yeah, I believe they are.
So do we need a roll call vote or is it just uh, Heidi?
Uh, generally, since you are still in teleconferencing, a roll call vote is um, the best way to proceed, just for the record.
Okay, so let's do that. Uh, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landriss?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yeah. Heidi, thank you. So let's, uh, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
I have a point of information specifically to the fact that we're meeting online. Oh, what's your sense of when we would be back in quote, real session? Is that in or on the horizon or is that so far out we shouldn't even think about it?
Um, so, so at the moment, uh, the, uh, unless you've gotten any new information, um, the Brown Act is uh, continues to be suspended, I guess, um, until September thirtieth. I don't believe that has changed. Um, uh, and at the moment, um, the city's uh, policies that we're not inviting people back to public meetings until the earliest would be after October the first. Um, so at this point, we are planning as if uh, we are returning to in-person meetings um, after October the first. Obviously, if that changes, we will keep the commission updated regarding that.
I can just say, because I'm following this, um, the, there's still obviously a really big question about whether the governor will extend the executive order. Um, the Brown Act uh, virtualization bills that are pending in the state legislature, hit a little bit of a hiccup and they're having a hearing tomorrow. But one of them, an important one, AB three-sixty-one, is going back to Senate Judiciary tomorrow for one more hearing. And they're doing their darndest to get it through before the deadline so that essentially, potentially, the governor would extend the EO, knowing that on January first, there's something in place. But I, I would say all bets are off for now. Um, but uh, there's no indic, he's given no indication of whether he's planning to extend the executive order or not.
So going back to our question about Heidi, about the um, grace period?
Sure. So the, the statutory language says that um, the uh, jurisdiction is required to adopt by the deadline. Um, and then if they don't adopt it within one hundred and twenty days of the deadline, then the four years kick in. However, guidance provided by HCD on their website does seem to indicate that there are conditions tied to ensure that you're um, in compliance for using that grace period. So that's such as considering, and one of the big questions we have is considering the comments provided by HCD, which we are in the process of doing, but I think we want further clarification from HCD on what it means to consider the comments within that time period for uses, for purposes of being able to maybe perhaps tap into that grace period. Um, we do have a meeting scheduled then tomorrow. I think we could probably seek guidance from them on clarification from them at that time. Clear as mud?
Yeah, clear as mud. So I am going to suggest that we meet on the twentieth and we schedule a time for the twenty-fourth. And we, and I am going to suggest that that start earlier than five-thirty, but maybe it start at three or four. Um, and that we sort of see how it goes and maybe we end up continuing the meeting on the twenty-fourth. Open to ideas. Commissioner Landriss?
So I, I would, I, I think that's a good, I think you s, you are, the, the bylaws say you can simply call the meeting, right? And I mean, I agree that we should start early if we have the meeting on the twenty-fourth. The moving pieces are if the call goes such tomorrow that HCD, that staff feels comfortable taking the, the grace period, then that's going to have to go through council agenda to figure out what their next available date is. And I would suggest that essentially, I would rather not meet on the twenty-fourth if we don't have to. If we have to, I will be there. And I would defer to you as chair um, to call the meeting or not, depending on all of the domino pieces that have to fall into perfect place in order for us to, you know, appropriately take advantage of some portion of the grace period. But I wouldn't want to commit to doing that now.
Yeah.
So I'm keeping on and on.
I think that staff has to advertise, right? So I guess the question for staff is when do you need to send the advertisement in? Like basically, when do we have to make this decision?
Um, so essentially, uh, to have a meeting um, on the tw, uh, the, the way our code works, we need, you know, two weeks. Um, notice, so we really, uh, by tomorrow, by noon.
Okay, and then, and so then to cancel the meeting on the twenty-fourth, do we actually have to convene and, and then cancel? Or do we, can we just send out a notice or post a notice that we're canceling?
No, you don't, you don't have to convene uh, to, to cancel. Um, you know, we just have to post a notice with the procedures that we do to cancel if, if we do set the meeting. Um, I think, you know, what we want, what we would prefer to do is to at least plan on having it, advertise it. And, you know, if you don't have the meeting or if the commission even completes its discussions on twentieth, for example, right? Um, you know, we could, then, then you would be completed and we don't need to meet on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so I'm going to propose three o'clock on the twenty-fourth. I'm open to other times and, you know, I'm just.
What's the downside of going?
What's the downside of going and telling, having it on a more regular day like the following Monday?
I can't do it the following Monday. I could do it the following Tuesday. I think the downside is that getting to council.
They can't notice, the housing element has to be noticed for council two weeks before the council meeting. If we don't meet until the Tuesday, then they won't have the 13 days notice that they need to notice it with our comments for the council meeting.
Right, your, your recommendation actually needs to be in the notice. You know, and, uh, in order for that, the council is meeting on the housing element, October the 12th. So your, um, decision, you know, would have to be in that notice in the paper, the 28th, I believe it is. We have it on the, the Monday. We just wouldn't have the time because the notice has to get to the paper for publishing in time the morning of the 27th.
That answers that question. Well, I guess we're back to the Friday afternoon.
Right, but again, as Sean just mentioned, right, as we look at what all the domino pieces are, it's possible that the council will not do their consideration on the 12th. I mean, I think we should plan that they will, but they could also say that they want more time. And I think it's partly gonna depend on what happens on the call tomorrow. So.
Would you say that, I mean, this is the question, Heidi alluded to this. We're implying, we are, I think what we're all saying is we wouldn't, we as a commission wouldn't object to taking a couple more weeks to get this right if it increases the likelihood that we're gonna get a certified element on the first try. But Heidi doesn't know yet whether or not that's wise for us to attempt to take. And we probably want written confirmation from HCD that considering their comments is a valid reason to take the grace period.
Yes, definitely.
Can we just, can we just end this and say we're gonna agendaize it for the 24th? Because we have to go, the notice has to be published tomorrow and that's that. And if we don't meet on the 24th, we don't.
Yes, we just need to pick a time. I think, we need to pick a time, Leslie. I suggest a 3 o'clock.
3 o'clock is fine for me. I'm open to anything.
Don't move. Don't move.
3 o'clock on the 24th.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for sticking in there today. I think this was a very productive discussion. Um, if there's nothing else, let us adjourn. It is 9:24 PM.
Thank you, Elisa, for sharing so well.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, guys.